All right. Hello, everybody. I'm going to call to order the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 11th. Could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kane.
President.
Commissioner Erickson.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Vice Chair Badami.
Here.
And Chair Birch.
Here. And I would ask that you all please join Commissioner Erickson in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Erickson. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is the cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of the town. There are a couple ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Written comments about agenda items submitted to the staff prior to a meeting are always very welcome and very helpful. At the meetings of the Commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First is during the verbal communication period, where an individual may speak on any topic which is not on the agenda. And second is any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an agendaized item. If you do wish to address the Commission tonight during the verbal communications period or during the consideration of an agendaized item, please complete a speaker card. These are located in front of you on the benches. Turn the card into one of our staff members. Be sure and print your name clearly. And if you have a difficult last name, writing it phonetically, it's always very helpful. And if you do intend to speak, we're going to ask that you come up to the podium, adjust the microphone so that we can hear you clearly. Be sure that you state your name and your address for the record. And we ask that you make sure that you keep your speaking to three minutes, please. Our first item is approval of the minutes of January 28th. Do I have a motion to approve of the minutes? Well, Commissioner Badami moved. And second?
Motion.
Commissioner Kane, do you have any comments or changes?
I have a comment that I did, I was not present at the last meeting, but I did review the tape, and so I can approve the minutes.
Great. I'll, oh, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I had one comment that might be a possible correction. It's on page two. When we asked Kim Connor about the, who the eight condominium units might be sold to, she mentioned that it was, could be families or seniors. And in the minutes, it states that she stated that it includes a below-market rate unit, and each unit has downstairs units for multi-generational families. The fact is, is that only five of the eight units do. I don't know if the issue is that she said that or that that was what was in the minutes, but I wondered if we should correct the minutes to say that some of the units have downstairs units.
Okay.
I didn't know what, I couldn't remember exactly what she said.
So that is what she said? So we don't capture all of the subsequent questions, because I believe a question was asked, and then that was clarified.
Okay.
So all of that is not captured in these action minutes? But if you'd like that for clarification, that's something that we can add.
Well, I know it's coming back because it's been continued, but I just wanted to ask that question, because if it was in fact incorrect, I thought it should be corrected.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Are there any written communications this evening?
There are. There is a desk item for item number one and a desk item for item number three this evening.
Has everybody had a chance to review the desk items?
Yes.
Great. All right. Requested continuances?
We do have one requested continuance, which is item number two, CVS.
Concerning that, do we have an idea of what date they're looking to come back? Have they given you any indication?
The applicant requested that it be continued to April 8th.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Huh?
Motion.
Oh, we do have to have a motion for that? Okay. We have a motion for item number two to be continued?
To a specific date.
To April 8th. Thank you, Commissioner Kane. Do we have a second? Commissioner Talisfor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just briefly, because there are new members, the reason why you do that type of motion when there's a continuance is so that we don't have to go through the whole noticing procedures. If you actually pick a specific date and make the motion, or at the end, any time when something doesn't get completed and you pick a specific date, then we don't have to do the complete re-noticing to the neighborhood, and that saves us some time and money. So that's why you do it.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, the Planning Commissioners serve on several town committees. Do we have any reports tonight? None? Do you have? Okay.
Commissioner Erickson and I attended the Housing Element Advisory Board meeting last week, and at the meeting, recommendation, preliminary recommendation was made as to what sites would be included in the housing. And then the next step, as I understand it, is that, that it'll be, or comments, there will be another meeting of the board, and then it'll be forwarded to.
Great. Thank you. Is that it? No others? All right. Now, we are at the public portion of the evening. Anyone who would like to speak on anything not on our agenda tonight is welcome to do so. Don't see any cards. I'm going to assume that everyone is here for the agenda items. Portion of our agenda. Okay. Wow. Much more powerful voice than I thought it did. So now we are on agenda item number one, which is an application to modify an existing conditional use permit to expand an existing grocery store, Lenardi's Market, into the existing adjacent retail space. This application is for architectural and site application S-14-018 and conditional use permit U-14-007. May I have a show of hands of all the commissioners who have visited the property? Okay. Are there any disclosures from any commissioners on this item? Great. Ms. Mosley, I understand you're going to give us the staff report.
It's like my childhood all over again. Growing up in an IBM-based family. Everybody knew how to work the computers better than me. Good evening. The application before you is for Lenardi's Market, which is located in the King's Court Shopping Center at the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill Road. Lenardi's is proposing to expand the existing 24,000-square-foot grocery store into the two vacant tenant spaces to the east of the supermarket, previously occupied by Wolf Cameron Hallmark Cards. The project would also include a small 29-square-foot addition for a new exit at the rear of the building, and a new produce cooler that would be located at the rear of the building between the store and an existing freezer unit. The new supermarket would have a gross floor area of just under 31,000 square feet. The existing conditional use permit is proposed to be modified to cover the expanded tenant space. The exterior changes to the building will be minor and primarily include changes to the windows and doors, and a minor change to the fascia over the area of expansion. The proposed use requires an additional 2.8 parking spaces for the new cooler and exit addition. The applicant is proposing to create nine new parking spaces at the rear of the shopping center to cover the additional 2.9 spaces that are required, and to bring the number of spaces for the shopping center into conformance. The applicant will be upgrading.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just had a question about the parking. The parking is specifically based on a ratio, and it's based on the number of strip spaces versus where people are actually parking. Is that right?
I'm not in, I'm not, so the parking requirements per town code are one space for every 235 gross square feet for this type of use.
Okay. And it's not, it's not based on the actual patterns of where people are parking?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner?
So to follow up on that, so it's nine extra additional parking spaces, correct?
Yes, they will be creating.
The back of the, in the back of the building?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I, what I was thinking is, when you ask for additional parking, it would be for the shoppers?
Well, the additional expanded area is actually an employee-only area such that, for the cooler and the exit, so they won't actually be used by, by customers?
Exactly. Okay. Which is, I mean, you would think that you would want the additional nine because of the trips, et cetera, et cetera, for the shoppers.
The proposed expansion only requires, like I said, 2.8. They are providing nine to bring the center, which is currently underparked, up to conformance.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane?
I had a similar concern to Commissioner Talisfor. When I went back there, there's a sign, you know, it says, "Keep out, or you will be hit with tomatoes," or something. And it was a one-way street going the other way, and I went in anyway. And the nine spots are behind the sign, so nobody can get there. And I was wondering if we could use language that specifically encourages employees to park in those nine spots, so that nine spots open up out front. Do you know if they have such a policy?
I do not know. You can ask the applicant if the store has a policy requesting that, or if the center as a whole has a policy regarding where employees park. I do not have an answer to that question.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, did you still have a comment?
I just wanted it to be clear that presently, the employees park outside, so if, in fact, we can get employees to park in the back, that will have a net benefit. But I also agree with Commissioner Kane that if we could impose as a condition that Lenardi's require employees to first seek spots in the back, and only if they're full, come forward, that would accomplish the purpose.
Just, just to add on to that, you know, part of why I made my comment earlier was I, when I visited the property, I actually counted, and there was about 13 cars parked in the back illegally. Okay, so I was assuming that they were employee parking, and that they were trying to save spaces for people in the front, so I agree with the comments that were already made that, that this is just going to legitimize what's already happening, because people are, in fact, parking in back now. Just that they're, just they're not marked spaces. So, you know, I think it's a good thing that they're doing more. And I'm glad that you clarified also that, that the entrance in the back was for the employees versus customers, because if not, then some other modifications would be required, because there's a lot of dumpsters and stuff back there.
I don't know if the property owner is here tonight, but the applicant could speak a little better to it. One thing I would like to share is that the area where they are proposing the nine new parking spaces is not associated with the leasing of, of Lenardi's. And so you have to realize, this is part of the whole shopping center. And I don't know how much they could control whether their tenants actually, or whether their employees actually have the capability to park, to require them to park back there without having, talking to the property owner, or at least somebody responsible for the leasing.
Okay. Do we have any? Commissioner Kane?
It just feels like if, if employees aren't encouraged, or whatever, and there's a sign restricted, it says, "Keep out." I don't see that as nine additional spots. That's what I think everybody's driving at. So to make those functional, nine functional new spots, I'd feel better if I knew employees were going to be requested, directed, whatever, to those nine spots, because I can't get to them. So there's not nine spots for me.
All right. Any other? Great. Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
Of course.
We'll now open the public portion of the hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the Commission for up to five minutes. And I believe we have a card from Daryl Wong. Is that correct? Yeah. Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Wong, you have five minutes to address the Commission. When the yellow light comes on, that means you have 30 seconds left. We're going to ask that you pull the microphone close to you so we can hear you. State your name and address for the record.
Okay. Daryl Wong. Address is 226 McAvoy Street, San Jose, California, 95126. I'm with J.K. Baker Construction, the general contractor representing Lenardi's. First of all, to address the Commission and the public. The Lenardi's operations manager, Mr. Tony Lucia, had planned to be here tonight, but he had a personal family matter this afternoon that he had to tend to. So he lives up in the North Bay, and he could not be here tonight. He apologized for that. But specifically, Mr. Tony Lucia would like to express the enthusiasm of Lenardi's continuing, continuing to serve the Los Gatos community by expanding the market and providing a much larger selection of produce and deli services in a very busy area that has a lot of new residential developments nearby to reduce actual trips of people driving further away when they don't have choices available to them. They've served this community for many years, and the local community has been very supportive of the business, and they want to continue that relationship to the community as well as to the town in committing to expand the market here. Specifically, to address the issue regarding the comments about the parking spaces in the rear and whether the employees are encouraged. Lenardi's typically leases spaces throughout the Bay Area for their stores, and definitely, they do not have control over the property management and the rules and regulations that are there. But in Mr. Lenardi's himself, he frequently visits the store, and he adamantly encourages his employees to park in the rear, because every parking space in the front is a dollar of potential revenue to the store. And he emphasizes that to his employees, the importance of the customer's service to provide the convenience and access for the customers coming to the center. So to say that Mr. Lenardi's encouragement is, is an absolute belief he has in all his centers. Now, certainly, this specific comment, we understand, and we certainly would go back to property, property management on this property and work with them to encourage the rest of the center and all the other tenants, which Lenardi's has no enforcement over, to encourage their employees to take the same adamant understanding that the front spaces try to be reserved for the visiting customers as much as possible. That's all. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Wong? Commissioner Badami?
I'm reading the desk item in regard to not having room to store the carts inside the building.
Yes.
And you're taking over two retail spots that are vacant, so can you explain your position, why you can't, why you don't have the room now with the proposed addition to keep those carts inside?
Well, yeah. Lenardi's currently has their cart storage outside in two designated cart storage areas. And in the expansion, the Lenardi's actually had tried to get additional space for the expansion, but because CVS occupies some of those spaces, Lenardi's does not have enough space in order for them to accommodate the produce selections that they had planned for this specific store, as well as all the new and enhanced deli and bakery area that they're trying to improve. The deli and bakery exists right now. It's been there for over 20 years, and it's getting a little dated, and they want to expand on the selection, at the same time improving, you know, all the aspects of upgrading the equipment to the stores to be more energy efficient, and using this expansion as a
Push their carts in, that they don't roll into oncoming traffic?
Yes, it is barricaded off.
Okay.
And it will have the concrete berms below, so that carts cannot go beyond that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Actually, I have two points. I just want to follow up on what you said. I don't have a problem with storing the carts outside, but I will, you know, and I know that at the moment, there is one enclosed area where they're kept, and then there's an outside area where they're also kept, which is not protected from moving or rolling or anything else. I don't see it as had been a problem. I'm there all the time. But if you're going to be changing it, I assume that whatever lines of these you have, you will see that both lines, if there are more than one, would be protected from rolling?
Yeah, the, the new designated cart areas, I think the architect does have a detail on one of the plans, but if it needs to be, hold on one second here. Yeah, I mean, if we need to show you specifically that how the carts cannot be.
She's going to turn it on, I think, in a minute. You might, you might show us.
You need to turn the overhead on?
While we're waiting for that, I mean, specifically, this Los Gatos location here, and if you've shopped there before too, you typically don't find loose carts flying around. Part of that has to do with the manager.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting they do, but you suggested they're always going to be sheltered, and in fact, that's not the case at the present time. I've not had a problem with it, but I just want to see if it's going to be fully sheltered now. If they ever get that fixed up, we can deal with it. But let's skip ahead for another question I have, and that was the, our report, which hopefully you've looked at, says the applicant will be creating nine new parle, park, parallel parking spaces. And I would direct this to both staff and you, because what I've heard is, the applicant doesn't have control over the parking spaces. So I don't quite understand how the applicant is creating nine new parking spaces, particularly in light of the fact that apparently, the parking spaces back there are, I don't know how many, but we've heard as many as 13 cars presently parked back there. So if staff could first clear up that, and then maybe we can get back to the, what I think is going to be a simple question.
So what I would offer at this point is, the representative from Lenardi's has obviously been working with the property management company to make sure that they're okay with that configuration of the nine spaces back there. The nine spaces are for the center as a total. Lenardi's expansion doesn't require nine additional spaces. I believe Ms. Mosley stated earlier that it's 2.8. So this is going to help the entire center. And so getting back to the potential for a condition to address that, staff will draft something, and then we can discuss that with the Commission to see if that meets their requirements.
Okay.
But I would go back to the applicant after you're done with your comments to see, make sure that's okay.
But then it's not the applicant who's providing the additional parking, it's the property owner. Is that correct?
Technically, yes.
Legally, yes, right? Okay, I just want to make sure that therefore, that the property owner signs on to that. Okay, going back to your question, my question to you about the, just the carts, do you, can you show us on the drawings where the carts are going to be kept?
Right here is a.
If you use the mic, you just pull it out, you can.
Right. Okay. Okay. Right here is going to be a triple cart area, and you can't see it at this scale, but certainly, it's got concrete berms all around the bottom, and it's got the rails in between, so it's very easy for a shopper to identify pushing the cart in. And there's no way for it to go veer outside of that area where the walkway is, as well as the parking spaces, due to the design. There's no design detail here, but that is the intent, is that the carts are not going to be veering outside of that area.
So if we were to require that all of the carts be stored within the lanes as shown, you would have no objection to that?
Yes, correct. There are two designated cart storage area here, one on this side and one on the other side, between the two entrances and exits.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to change the subject. I, it's not that I don't think it's a good idea, but I am curious about the 31,000 square feet. There was a statement made to, you know, bring the Lenardi's in compliance with the, with some of the other locations. So I was just curious as to what the 31,000 square feet stands relative to, A, other Lenardi's locations that are currently modern?
Yeah.
And B, some of the other stores in Los Gatos. And then I have a second question, which is, the, the standard of some of the grocery stores, and I didn't see this in the plan, so I assume it's not there, is to make it not only a shopping, but sort of a dining experience. And I didn't see anything about that, and I was just wondering if you could comment, because Whole Foods across the street has places to sit and eat, and Safeway has Starbucks, and there's places to eat. And so I, so if you could answer those two questions that.
Yes. So the first question pertaining to the size, I don't know if you've visited the Lenardi's store on Bascom Avenue, just across the freeway. We have just completed that about two months ago for Lenardi's, and that was also a case where they had a very old version of a store that used to be Cozentino's, and they had committed to upgrading the store, and as part of the commitment, the landlord went ahead and upgraded the rest of the center, which was a major improvement to the area. But if you go into that store, the Bascom store is actually a little bit larger than here. I think it should be about 35, 34,000 to 35,000 square feet. And that's the target that Lenardi's would like to have. Part of the reason, when they negotiated the lease here to try to take the space, it took quite a bit of time working. quite a bit of time working through, because CVS also had some of the rights to write a fierce refusal on some of those spaces. And the lack of the space did not allow Lunardi's to have the full ability to put in some of the elements that they would like, but they were trying to work within the confines of the space and still design it to very much mimic what they call their modern store. If you go to Bascom, it's a perfect example of the lineup of all-new equipment and deli service and the produce selection. Everything is much wider than what they can offer here at Los Gatos currently. The aspect regarding the, I'm sorry, the, the second question was...
It was sort of about, you know, like, if someone wanted to go in and get, go to the deli and get a sandwich, could they sit and eat it? Yeah, and I didn't see that in the plans, sorry.
That, that was one element that was originally what we had submitted to planning, that Lunardi's wanted to have what a small café area with indoor seating, as well as some outdoor patio seating. But unfortunately, due to this center having the lack of parking spaces, which was not Lunardi's problem, it's just, it was an old center, it's always had a deficiency in count, and there was no way to accommodate, because the parking ratio is different for the seated area and even any of the outdoors. So Lunardi's actually gave up one of the very important aspect of what they wanted to accomplish here. And they actually took it on to, in order to do this expansion, as we mentioned earlier, the nine additional parking spaces is technically provided by landlord, but Lunardi's is paying for all of it, because the landlord says they're triggering all this by trying to expand the store. So there were a lot more elements that Lunardi's would have liked to offer in the store, but the deficiency of parking created some trade-offs as to what is most important. And Mr. Lunardi's believes that offering the most wide selection of produce and a new enhanced deli and bakery would probably benefit the community the most than the seating.
Any other? Commissioner Kane?
A question first for staff. Do they in fact have to have 371 spots for this CUP to go forward, A and S?
Yes, the parking is required to accommodate the current tenants for all of the existing center, as well as their expansion.
Well, yes is good, because I still have a problem with those spaces, and the owner's not here, Mr. Lunardi's not here, everybody named in it is not here, and I wanted to give them a reasonable protest if it's relevant and appropriate for me to do that. I didn't actually know there was a back road behind Lunardi's. And I studied the plan, and I went, there's a back road behind, so I went back there. First, I went back the wrong way. It's a one-way, it's a narrow lane, it's one-way. You circle the entire shopping center, and you go in from the other side, and that's where the sign is. And it says restricted authorized personnel. Once I got past that sign, and if commissioners feel likewise, help me out here. It is a real mess. It smells, it's dirty, it's got pallets all over the place. As the other commissioner said, there's cars double parked, and there was a truck unloading, which meant I had to back out the way I came in, because there was no room. Maybe that's why they don't want to park back there. I just think that should be looked into, you know, for reasons unrelated to the case perhaps. I ended up behind Lunardi's, and it is an eyesore. It is a smell sore. It's a mess. And it certainly doesn't look like the front of the building, and it certainly doesn't fit findings we have to make on character and harmony and beneficial and healthy and can, I love Lunardi's, but I, they should have kept me out of that back lane.
So, right, so to address your concern, this expansion addresses that issue. If you actually look at the demo plan and the finished plan, part of adding the additional cooler allows Lunardi's to store the items inside that news produce cooler, instead of some of the stuff that they currently have in overflow on the outside. And then, as well, if you look at the reconfig, reconfiguration on the inside, they will now have a warehousing area, which they lack right now, so that they can get all the stuff that is overflowing on the outside to bring it in, so they can clean up the outside. That was one of the purpose of this expansion. Besides being able to sell the larger retail area, they needed that warehousing area to support what they were doing.
So if it, if it's intended, it wouldn't be harmful if we put in a line item that said, with the lovely expansion will come a lovely backyard lane, as opposed to what's there right now? And the traffic situation is not being monitored, and you can't get by if there's a truck there, so if I was an employee, I wouldn't park back there.
I think that may have been a question. So, yes, the commission could definitely add a condition relating to the cleanliness of the area behind the Lunardi's store.
Any agreement with that, Chair Burch, or am I on my own?
No, I, I can only speak for myself, since you directed that at me. I, I don't disagree. I also noticed that that would be a difficult area to park, and I, I think that it would be probably reasonable to the applicant, I'm sure, if we made cleaning that area and making it a desirable area for the employees to park as part of our condition.
Well, actually, you couldn't park in that direct area back there where Lunardi's is, because that is part of the fire lane in there. It's not wide enough to add, you know, designated parking areas.
No, 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 we were not referencing that. What, I think we were just referencing more the accessibility to those nine spots to make sure that it was clean and desirable for your employees.
And that's one of the areas that Lunardi's has to work with property management in terms of what they can do to help improve the overall rear area in terms of where they put their dumpsters, and so that when we stripe the parking spaces, they are accessible to people.
And I think, Mr. Kane, when it comes time for a motion to be made, if one is made, that that would be something that we would look to you to please put some wording behind that? Yes?
Just one further question. With the expansion, do you anticipate needs to increase your enrollment of employees? Are you gonna hire some additional people?
That I cannot answer directly. I, we don't get involved with Lunardi's personnel. We're contractor, we help them through their build-out as to what they need. But that one, I would have to defer back to the owner.
All right. Commissioner Banditti?
I'd like for you to elaborate on a 635 square foot cooler to the rear. I'm not sure if it's gonna be noise generating that might affect the residential neighborhood to the rear.
Yeah, the cooler is just insulated metal panels. It's, it's gonna sit between the existing freezer unit and the existing building, so, and on top of that, it has no moving parts or mechanical pieces. It just has refrigerant lines going back to the existing chill water system, so it doesn't generate any noise itself.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson had her hand up next.
Just to this point about the property owners versus the tenants, I mean, after this expansion, wouldn't Lunardi's be the largest tenant in that shopping center, or one of the largest?
Yeah, I don't know what the exact square footage of CVS is currently, but they would be one of the anchors. They're currently one of the anchors, and they will probably continue to be.
Right, and with this expansion, you'd be an even bigger anchor, so you, you know, presumably would carry some weight with the property owners to be able to accomplish the goals of the property?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly in terms of what is in the lease between Lunardi's and the ownership, whether they've negotiated some leverage as to, based on square footage, what influence they may have. But I think one of the, one of the things that Lunardi's has discussed with the ownership is about, you know, trying to get them to work through some other improvements to the center if possible, because Lunardi's is committing to spending the money, even for parking spaces that has, is not directly required as part of what they're doing. And they're saying they're taking steps to improve for the rest of the center, and what can the landlord do besides, in terms of rules and regs alone, is some of the issues that we talked about, improving the looks and the parking and the access in the rear.
Commissioner?
I tell, I keep wanting to just say Joanne. That's why I keep stopping myself. I just want to say Joanne. It's okay. Hello, thank you. I'm gonna switch to another subject briefly, and that is, right now, on A 3.0 of the exhibit, I see a photograph of the existing Lunardi's. And when I look at this, I'm, I know that, well, it sounds like you're planning on keeping this, the trim and the stucco all the same. I have a question about the awnings. Will they remain? Are they leaving? And what, can we talk about, is there, has there been conversation about the, will the color remain as well? Yeah, and then you're also raising the parapet, I noticed, another three feet. So, can you talk about that, please?
Right, so, yeah, in this proposal here, if you look at the elevation number two, you'll see there's a call-out to a hatched area of a new three-foot parapet to conceal any equipment on the roof that is part of the new equipment serving the enhanced deli and bakery area.
That stepped back, by the way, excuse me for interrupting you.
It is, yes, it stepped back probably, probably 14, 15 feet. That's basically underneath the existing walkway.
Okay.
Right. The parapet was to do that, to conceal equipment, as well as trying to update that look to make it look consistent with the stucco parapet that is existing in the front of the Lunardi's store right now.
Where the, where it's that tall elevated red area?
Yes, correct.
Oh, I see, you're trying to match to the...
Right.
The left.
Yeah, we're trying to match the same detail, yes.
Okay, but now, what about the awnings?
Which awning specifically? The, the angle ones that are...
Yes, that are over the area of Lunardi's currently that are the, it's the...
That's part of the overall center, and it's, it's consistent throughout the L shape. Those are remaining, we're not touching those, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I wanted to know that. All right, that's all for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
Hopefully, a couple simple questions. So because you, I was trying, so I'm gonna go back to the, to the shopping carts for a moment. Trying to be helpful as opposed to not helpful, but to assure that we won't, we won't have a problem that you'll have to come back and remodel over again, so forth. So, because you didn't provide us detail of the, that area, can you help, can you describe to us how I deposit the cart into the area, from what side, and how I deposit it in, and how you're gonna prevent the carts from rolling? I mean, I'm not talking to the side, I'm talking to the front and the back. So where, where do I, practically, when I shop there, I go take my cart to my car, unload my groceries, now what do I do?
Right, so you would have...
Hopefully, I don't leave it in the parking lot.
Right, so, like most other places, if you were to see cart corrals, you walk up to it and you push it in, it should be effortless process to put it, the cart back into the... Now, the location was specifically put at the front of the store for the convenience of the shoppers to be able to get the cart out, as well as returning, they know exactly where it is, instead of looking around the parking lot, trying to see where can they bring a cart. The actual process of going in, the proposed layout, they would not be pushing it in from the parking side, they walk towards the door, and it swings back there into the angle area here.
That answers the question, yes. So then you'd have some sort of a curbing on the parking lot side?
And then there would be curbing all the way around, so there's no way for the cart bottom to escape. Like many of the shopping centers, they have those cheap ones that they just throw on the surface, and there's no concrete curbing. The cart does come out beyond that, and we're, we're trying to do it with curbing here.
But the design is, presumes the customer will go back to the sidewalk and enter from the store side?
Right, and, right, and part of that, too, is that Lunardi's staff there actually quite often help the customers in loading their vehicle as well, if requested, and they offer the service as well. And typically, they have somebody going out, knowing that there are a number of people during busy hours as well, that they go follow up and make sure that they retrieve the cart and put it in the corral.
Yeah, my wife brings me with her to do that, perform that function. My second question is, is on the east edge of the property, at the most narrow point, will it support two cars? It's not clear to me, because unlike Commissioner Kane, I actually rode my bike back there, so, didn't drive back there, but, so at the narrowest point, will it support two-way traffic? Do you happen to know, you've been on the site, and you do this for a living, I didn't measure?
You're talking about the rear of the building?
To, to gain access to the parking, the proposed parking spots, so at the east, at the east edge of the property?
Right.
At, at the most narrow point, because at the, at the, at the most southern part of it, it supports two lanes of traffic easily, does it at the most, do you, do you just happen to know, it's not something necessarily that you're responsible, but you've been on site?
I have not specifically went and looked for the most narrow part and measured it out, so I couldn't answer that specifically, no.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I have a couple of questions I want to throw out as far as actually construction logistics. So, obviously, you've driven in this area, and you understand this is an incredibly congested drive and parking area. I am looking at this, and apparently, in the front, you've got a new grease interceptor coming in, coming from the east. It looks like we have a new electrical service coming in. I'd like to know how you're going to stage that work to minimize interruptions of the traffic flow, and as you're doing the work in front of the supermarket, how you're gonna maintain the sidewalk for accessibility to people from both sides of the shopping center?
So, going to the front where the grease intercept is gonna be, it definitely, there are currently two entrance and exits to Lunardi's, and we've done the same thing at their Bascom store. We worked on one side so that one door is accessible and the sidewalk is accessible, and we get that portion done, and then we cover that, and then we move on to the other door and make the other side accessible. We have not had that problem in coordinating in most other store remodels where the store is still open.
I'm not as concerned about that, why, to excavate for that grease interceptor, you're gonna have large trucks, you're gonna be blocking the drive aisle, that people won't be able to walk from CVS to Wells Fargo, along with that entire front drive aisle in that area will be completely unusable. I'm curious what your logistics plan is on that type of work?
Walking from CVS to the Wells Fargo, currently, yeah, the walkway, the cover walkway ends at that jog in the Lunardi's. We keep a four-foot opening in front of the store accessible, is what our plan is at all time. Even when we do the excavation, it's further out, it's actually out in the parking area is where the grease intercept will be.
So then, for the excavation, do you plan to park the excavation trucks then during, through that drive aisle right there in front of where the grease interceptor is gonna go?
Well, there are some parking spaces that are, so the grease intercept is gonna go somewhere up in this area, in the parking here. So the, the truck that works could be parked in this area, and we can still maintain a four-foot aisle there. We don't have any plans to interrupt the flow of traffic going towards this front side, which is a primary route throughout.
I'm sorry, just a couple more quick questions. Are you adding mechanical equipment to the roof?
Yes.
How are you going to get it up there? Are you doing a crane pick?
We expect to have to do a crane pick.
So I assume that that would be off-hours work?
Usually, we do it very early. Usually, we do it very early in the morning, four or five o'clock, and it would probably be picked, most likely, from the rear of the building.
So is that something, this has been a question for staff, how do we notify neighbors when work like that's going to be happening at 5:00? Because that is quite loud and intrusive work.
The commission could add a condition that the adjacent neighborhood be notified two weeks in advance of that work being done.
Okay, all right. Okay, one last question, I promise I'm done. Lay down space. Where do you plan on staging on the site? Again, the parking lot is packed, there's not very much space for you to be putting materials and construction crew trucks and everything else. Where do you plan to have that all happen?
Right. Fortunately, the way the expansion's going to work, there are two current vacant spaces that Lunardi's expanding into. So it's totally open space. Most of all the material and everything that's staged will be on the inside, because that new area, if you look at the floor plan, is going to end up being a sales floor and produce. And most of this equipment doesn't come until the construction is practically done, and it gets delivered, and it gets set. So the inside, that's approximately 65 square feet of staging area for everything. Contractor toolboxes and everything would also be stored inside. And in the rear of the Lunardi's, where the new produce cooler is proposed back here, there is an area here that, where most of the contractor work would be getting the equipment, loading, unloading from the rear, and not so much the front of the store.
Okay, and I assume that you would not be opposed to us putting a condition in there that all material deliveries happen at 7:00 a.m. and are completed by 9:00 to minimize the amount of traffic?
Large deliveries, or, I mean...
Yeah, I'm not saying, you know, one little truck, but I'm saying your large deliveries.
Yeah. I mean, large deliveries is, the timing is what we can get for, without interrupting the flow of the traffic, is what we're looking for, because there are large items that has to go there, and it will probably have to be done in the daytime. But as long as we're talking about trucks that come but not interrupt any of the flow of the traffic, the deliveries are no different than any of the existing delivery trucks that deliver the produce. It comes on a 24, 30-foot truck, and they unload the stuff and they leave. Large items like getting mechanical equipment and all those, certainly, we want to work those within hours where we're not disturbing, because it takes quite a bit more involved to deliver large items.
Okay, so large items like the mechanical equipment, steel, those type of deliveries, we could have put to a limited timeframe so that you're not, well, one, you're not far from a really active school area. We've, this is not the first time we've talked about this with people with the construction. We've had most people be very happy to comply because of the dangers of the large trucks in those intersections, and also because you are dealing with a very busy, busy parking. So I would like to put something in there as far as the large...
Before 7:00, you're saying?
Like between 7:00 and, yeah, by 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, so to avoid the school traffic.
Yeah. Yeah, early deliveries could probably be accommodated.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'm done. Okay. See, I really want to say Joanne. Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. So you know what? I want to get back to shopping carts, and I know we've talked about it. I was glad to hear that when we retreat, when we go to get our shopping cart, we will be bringing it toward the sidewalk, or toward Lunardi's, not into the actual parking area.
Yes, correct.
Thank you, that was a good clarification. In the past, when we've looked at shopping, I mean, grocery stores, really, one of the things that we sort of focused on were shopping carts. And, how do I put this? We've asked them to provide sort of a camouflage for shopping carts, and so I'm a little bothered that there wasn't maybe a little more thought put into this. I really, truly hate to see shopping carts in that area. So, but my question for you is, would you, with this new construction, would you ever consider, or did you consider perhaps, at least putting some kind of a barrier, a decorative barrier, that would face the parking lot? Whether it could be trellaged or, I can't even come up with anything, but you had an architect working on that. Is that something that you might consider now to just soften the look of that? I mean, Lunardi's is sort of an icon in our town, and I would hate to have the shopping carts be such a focal point of your new modernization.
Yeah, I think we'll certainly bring that expressed concern to Lunardi's and looking at how the architect can come up with some simple, we call it fascia or something, that attaches to that area to try to enhance the look. Yeah.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Hanson?
Back on the parking issue, I noticed when I was visiting the property, I went in on the Pete's side, and I drove around the back, and there's a big, huge sign saying, "Authorized vehicles only beyond this point." And so in addition to the general cleaning up, I think there's some signage modifications that are going to be required, because if there's going to in fact be real parking back there, that, you know, it ought to be clear, you know, who can park there.
But, yeah, actually, that's, that probably has to do with the property management and trying to get employees to park in the back and employees, customers in the front. But this is the, maybe a clarification from staff in terms of the interpretation. The parking ratio is 1 for 235 for retail, but that encompasses the parking for both employees and customers. It's not, that's the parking space, there's 235 for customers only. So that's the formula that we had followed, and I think the center is trying to get the employees to park in the back to free up, keep the spaces in the front. The parking there situation is pretty deficient as it is now, and in taking some steps, Lunardi's is trying to improve upon some of that aspect. Besides adding the nine parking spaces, one of the things that we'd like the commission to understand, if you've shopped there, you know this front area, right now, the parking lot, actually, most vehicles park in this area here, juts out into that driving area, and it's a very congested area, it's very difficult to drive through that. In this proposal here, in getting, reconfiguring this, we're moving the vehicles into compliance spaces, moving it closer to the store, so that this aisle way actually widens a little bit. It's much like then in front of the Bank of America and CVS sites. So it's an overall improvement to the flow and everything else, but parking space count, 1 for 235, enforcement and employees parking in the back. We can certainly go back to property management and ask them the reasoning of their signage that they have. I don't think Lunardi's put it there.
Okay. Well, again, it comes down to a question of responsibility, but since this issue's on the table, I think it's important to get this addressed, because there is a parking problem there, and, and right now, it says authorized vehicles only, so it isn't going to alleviate the parking problem unless the signage is also addressed as well. And then I had a comment, according to Kendra's point about the schools, I think in whatever conditions are put in there, we should be very, we should make sure we're clear on what time the schools are actually going to school. I sit on safe routes to schools, and, you know, I tend to think it's earlier than 8:00 when the kids are going to school, or at least around then, so, and you've got like multiple schools around there, so I think we should be clear on the hours, you know, that it would be acceptable, because we definitely wouldn't want it to be during the time when kids are committing to school, especially at that intersection.
All right. Could we have anything else? Alvin? Commissioner Kane?
When we encourage them to deliver the construction equipment early, we know that in their existing CUP, they have a provision that says delivery hours, and that deliveries shall not be made between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., and that's obviously for benefit of the neighborhood. So, again, I don't know that it's appropriate coming from here, but I, you have a lot of good planning to do to bring in that construction equipment at the same time you're bringing in those trucks. It's a one-lane road, and you call it a fire lane, and I think, what's the phrase? To the satisfaction of the director of community development. You've got to work out a plan to have the deliveries and the construction going on on a one-lane road, which is a fire lane, and have that all come out right. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Well, normally, we have public comment, but I don't have any cards, and then you get to speak again for another three minutes. Since we've kept you up here a long time, do you have any additional comments that you would like to make to the commission?
No, at this time, I think we, you know, we've answered, and hopefully, the commission understands Lunardi's goals and commitment to trying to enhance the situation, but unfortunately, they don't have control over all the aspects of the parking lot and what other tenants and their employees do. Certainly, they would be going back, we would suggest highly that they go back to property management and work through some of the issues that are brought up, so, to see how they can improve upon the signage and access to the parking spaces. I think the overall, we hope the commission look at this as, if Lunardi's does nothing right now, the center is what it is. It doesn't change. Adding some additional parking spaces does enhance it. Improving the aesthetics of the front and reconfiguring the parking in the front of Lunardi's, all at Lunardi's expense, because the landlord isn't paying for any of it. Lunardi's has taken on a lot outside of what they had planned to provide as a service in terms of the store sales, to support the sales merchandise that they have. So we hope that you can look and see that Lunardi's is actually trying to proactively take some steps to improve some of the situations that have been deficient for many years, and if you ask any of the staff, or if you shop there yourself, you've probably experienced some of those parking issues. And the key thing that Lunardi's really want to emphasize is they're looking forward to improving that front parking situation with the reconfiguration of the parking. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We are now closing the public portion of the public hearing for this item. I'm going to ask if any commissioners have questions of the staff, would like to comment on the application, or would like to introduce a motion for consideration. Commissioner Hanson?
I had one question that I wanted to ask earlier that I did not, and that is, as a new commissioner, I'm not 100% familiar with the new traffic impact fee. The traffic impact fee, there's 224 additional average daily trips. What does that translate into in terms of dollars? And my second question is, is it within the policy of the traffic impact fee to earmark that for any specific traffic improvements that related to this project that would be desirable?
Thank you very much. As you saw in the draft permit, this project does trigger the payment of a traffic impact fee. It is a significant addition, given the change to the fee resolution that council recently adopted. We typically don't do the final calculations until we're at the building permit stage, just because there are so many variables, but I think it is a significant increase. And no, unfortunately, we cannot earmark it for particular improvements. Those are decisions that the council makes through the capital improvement program.
Well, it says actually in the document that the, maybe I'm mixing apples and oranges, but it said something about traffic improvements are determined by the traffic engineer.
Correct. Those are separate, those are project-related.
To the actual construction of the project?
Yes, to this particular, but the fee goes to other off-site improvements, and so depending upon the amount of money that's collected in this vicinity, the director of Parks and Public Works will make a recommendation to the council regarding appropriate capital improvements. And it is for the larger transportation system, so not necessarily just for roadways or pavements, but perhaps bicycle and pet improvements as well.
Any other questions of staff? Does anyone want to venture a motion? Commissioner Talisfor?
Sure, I'll venture a motion. So all of you who have, if there's any conditions to add to this, you'll chime in, I hope. Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank Mr. Wong for the presentation in the absence of Mr. Lucia. It was, you were really quite well-versed, and I think answered our questions as fully, and we appreciate it, thank you. So I would like to move that we approve application, architecture and site application S-14-018, conditional use permit application U-14-007, and that's requesting approval to expand an existing grocery store into existing adjacent retail space, and to modify the existing conditional use permit on property zone C1, and the APN is 523-06-045. I can make the findings based on the California Environmental Equality Act that this project is categorically exempt as, and that's that. And also in granting a conditional use permit as required by Section 2920120, 190 of the Town Code for granting a conditional use permit, that the proposed use will, is essential and desirable. As you can tell, that the parking lot and the store is usually filled with people seven days a week. I can make the finding, too, that the use will not impair the integrity or character of the zone, and number three, that the proposed use would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare, and that conditions placed on the permit will mitigate potential impacts. And number four, that the proposed use of the property is in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the general plan and the purposes of the Town Code. I can also make the finding that there's a compliance with the commercial design guidelines as exhibited in the elevation that we have in front of us, and the considerations as required by Section 29, .20, .150 of the Town Code, that the considerations in review of architecture and site were all made in reviewing this project. And I think that's it. So, now, we do have some conditions to address and to add, and so the one that I remember was notifying neighbors about the, is it just the roof picks that, for the parapet addition, or would you like to expand on that?
Yeah, it was specifically, what I was speaking about was the crane pick for the mechanical equipment on the roof.
Okay. And that should be, I think that you, we stated the hours as between 4:00 and 7:00?
No, I believe that they were proposing to do it earlier.
Okay.
In the day to minimize cranes pretty large.
And those hours are, that would be in the, in the, what am I trying to say? The information to the neighbors?
Yes, so we can provide language, or we can use the language you're providing for a condition, and the commission could consider that, but it's up to you. If you have a specific time range, then we can do that. I think I recall prior to 8:00 a.m. was one thing that was thrown out, so that we're not impacting potential school operations.
All right, so, all right, so that, it would be both for, okay, that would be one condition, and then the other condition would be for delivery hours for materials?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
What I was looking at is, if you look in item number 43, it simply says that they'll be coordinated with the town engineer. All I would like to do, I don't really want to necessarily specify a time, different schools have different times, I would just ask that the applicant coordinate deliveries, particularly large deliveries, with the town engineer, and try to coordinate those around the busy school schedules.
Okay, that's...
I had a couple more, too.
That's fine for me.
Okay. I also wanted to put on there that the majority of material laydown space will be on the interior.
Okay.
Hang on, I had another one. Oh, and on, oh, do we have to before we do this?
It's still the motion.
What, she's still adding to the motion?
We're still adding to the motion, right. Yeah, I'm still...
All right, we're just adding.
Be the complete motion.
So also on item number 20, I wanted to make sure on this project that a site superintendent phone number was displayed at all times.
I would agree with that.
Those are my notes. Do we have any other additions or second? Commissioner O'Donnell?
We also talked about, we also talked about that the...
We also talked about, we also talked about the drive-through in the back and the parking in the back.
Yes.
And I think personally, it's quite possible that we will want to restrict the parking in the back to employees, and that may be the reason for the sign saying restricted, because it may not be the safest place to be for a normal human being to be driving their car. But I think we should leave that to the staff to determine that. In other words, one question was raised about the signage. If, in fact, it is restricted, there are nine spots, to employees, and apparently it can be employees of anybody, in the center, that should have no trouble being filled. There was something else on, oh, and the parking, it was not clear to me where this parking is going to go. It's not going to go where we thought it was, but again, I'll leave that to, I personally would suggest we leave that to the discretion of the staff. And something on that.
Commissioner O'Damie, I interrupt you. What was, can you give it, what is the condition? What is the condition of the parking?
The condition is, it's the, well, there are a couple of things. One is, we are requiring nine additional spaces.
Right.
But we know that that is without the purview of the applicant because it's owned by the center.
Yes.
So we're requiring that satisfaction be made that the center owner is committing to the nine additional spaces. Those spaces apparently are going to be paid for, and I don't know, but it sounds like maintained by the applicant. That should be spelled out and clear. The signage also should be, according to staff, and it's my suggestion that those nine spots be saved, it doesn't have to be exclusive, but saved for employees of the various occupants and tenants of that property. Then there was also a condition, a separate condition, that that area behind Lunardi's be kept and maintained in a condition satisfactory to the town, which suggests some pretty good improvements.
Yes.
And I think those are the two conditions that I would suggest we add.
Okay. Does anyone else? Commissioner Erickson? Second or additional comments?
No, just a question for the maker of the motion. So presently, condition seven with respect to shopping carts requires the shopping carts to be inside of the building. So is the intent of the motion, maker of the motion, to require them to be inside of the building?
I, you know what, I don't think so, as I heard the commission speaking, so we probably need to change that condition. The one thing, though, that I did hear Mr. Wong say is he would bring it to the attention of the architect to maybe create a fascia for those carts. So somehow can we word that into a motion?
Could I suggest that this, this condition that we want to add is simply that the cart storage be as described to us this evening in the drawing, and but that, in addition to it, as shown, a fascia, again, satisfactory to the staff, will be placed in the front of, that is, the parking side of the, as I understand it, two sides of the shopping cart locations.
Is the maker of motion agreeable to that?
That's a good motion. I mean, that's a good condition.
Okay. Do we have a second? Commissioner Kane? No, you have more comments.
I just want to add a comment. Commissioner O'Donnell covered most of my concerns. I wanted to be specific in offering staff some advice or guidance. The nine spots they're going to put in are currently difficult to figure out exactly where they're going to put it because it's such a mess. There's guys parked all over the place. On the design that we received, it shows a place where five cars are supposed to be parking and a place where seven cars are supposed to be parking, just opposite the nine new slots parallel. When I drove in there, there were 10 cars in the seven spots and three large trucks in the five spots. And so what I'm, to the maker of the motion, when we talk about cleaning it up, maybe making it more attractive for employees to park back there, check on the lighting for what it's like at night, and when they, when they stripe the nine parallel spots, let them restripe the old spots and see if they can have them more organized and more inviting to employees to park back there.
Can that be written into as a condition, or is that just for staff to note?
Yeah, can we do that? That seems something a little bit more geared towards the landlord, not the tenant.
Right. Or this application.
Excuse me, just a question. My understanding was that although the landlord has to agree to it, we were told that the applicant will pay for everything. So if we want the applicant to restripe as suggested by Commissioner Kane, which I think is a good suggestion, it may be subject initially to the approval of the property owner, but I think we ought to get that approval, and then we're asking the applicant to do it. So personally, I don't know whether Commissioner Kane wants that as a condition or whether it is our advice to the staff.
If the maker of the motion will accept that, I want it as a condition, and staff knows these things better than I do. I mean, stripe it not just for the cars, but for the dumpsters, because the dumpsters are also all over the place, and it's just downright unsafe, and it wouldn't take much to clean it up. So if that's okay with the maker of the motion, I'd like to get that in there somehow.
Okay, I would accept that as a motion. I think it's important.
All right. Do we have a second? Commissioner O'Damie?
I'll second the motion.
Any additional comments, concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
We will now consider, well, we're going to move agenda item number four up to agenda item number three, just to be very clear. So that is an application requesting approval of a sign program for Commercial Center on Property Zone CH PD, APN 52965-027 through 028. Sign program SNPRG-14-060. And I understand that Ms. Walters is going to give us the presentation tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. The property owner has been working with staff on a sign program for the Sandy Lane Commercial Center, which is the former Swanson Ford site located at the northwest corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill Road. The commercial design guidelines require projects with multi-tenants to prepare a sign program for review and approval by the Director of Community Development prior to the issuance of individual sign permits for the multi-tenant center. In August of 2012, the Planning Commission approved architecture and site applications for the Commercial Center and the residential development with a condition of approval which required the sign program be referred back to the Planning Commission for final review. With this referral, Planning Commission becomes the deciding body for the sign program. The final tenant mix for the Commercial Center is almost complete with three approved CUPs, two pending CUPs, and active tenant improvements. The coffee shop in Building One opened yesterday. The proposed sign program establishes specific locations and design parameters for the major project signs, which includes one ground sign proposed to be located at the driveway at Los Gatos Boulevard, one wall sign to be located at the corner, stone ramp located at the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill Road, and then wall signage for the center. The sign program does not approve individual wall signs. Each tenant will have to, after the, if, once this is approved, apply for a sign permit. The proposed sign program is in compliance with the Town Code and the town's commercial design guidelines. Staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in Exhibit 3, and this concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff? Commissioner Talisfor?
Right, I just have a question. Do we have any materials here of?
Oh, yes, we do. I will grab that board.
Thank you.
I think we could just pass it along, if that's okay. Okay. And I guess perhaps while we're passing that along and reviewing, Commissioner O'Damie, did you have a question?
I do, I have a question for staff. So will the commission have an opportunity to provide input on the individual signs? Because when I look at Exhibit A5-0, I have some concerns.
The individual signs will be, as with all other individual signs, will be approved by the Community Development Director. So the individual signs will not come back to the Planning Commission. The, and I think Ms. Walters can add some additional clarification, but these are just representations. These don't necessarily represent the final sign application that's going to be submitted.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? No? Aye. Thank you. Oh, you do, I'm sorry, Commissioner Talisfor.
Well, looking at the materials, and I, I'll let you both look at them. No, that's fine. Can you please identify exactly which is what in blah, blah, blah? Maybe, yes.
I can let you know that the stone that's represented there represents the stone veneer that's on the site of the buildings, and it's also being matched on the ground sign. And I would ask that the sign professional that's here tonight talk to you about the materials board with regard to the proposal.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Ms. Walters. All right, we will now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant five minutes to speak. Dean Isaacs, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Dan Moran?
Hi there. Yeah, Danny Moran.
All right, you have five minutes to address us. Please state your name and your address for the record.
So Danny Moran, and 715 Bicknell Road, Los Gatos, California, 95030. So I'm the owner of Corporate Sign Systems, and we're a architectural sign company, one of the leaders in the Silicon Valley, and we do a lot of sign programs for a lot of corporations as well as shopping centers. It's mostly high-end signage, so the design we've developed for, excuse me, for Sandy Lane is a more of an architectural signage design. It's not so much your standard retail signage design. As you can see with the materials, the, do you have, who has the board?
I do. So that's what I was saying, should we put this out somewhere so we can reference it?
So as Erin mentioned, the stones, the same stone that's been used on the facade of the shopping center at some parts of the building. And then also this particular material is the precast concrete cap for the monument sign. And then also we have the reverse channel letters that are aluminum fabrication, seamless, painted a dark brown color to match some of the dark brown treatments that are on the building. And then simply dark brown metal, this would represent the monument sign with the vinyl letters on it.
Okay.
So it's a very simple design, and it's one that doesn't have exposed fasteners, there's no pop rivets or anything of that sort, no plastic trims. It's just a very simple.
Sorry. All right, Ms. Talisfor?
You finished with your?
Yeah, sorry.
I wasn't sure either, so, yes.
Thank you for coming down. So if you would hold that up again, I was, I'm curious about the illumination of these signs.
So with reverse channel letters, instead of a frontlit letter that has a plastic trim cap and a plastic face, instead of that, the letter is opaque metal, and it's offset from the wall that it's being attached to, and the light actually comes out the back.
So each letter, is it on, is it, is the letter put directly on the building or on a, you know?
Directly on the building.
On the building, and how, how is that lit? How would?
So it has LED lights on the inside of the letter.
Okay.
And the light escapes out the back since the letter's offset from the building.
Do we have anything here in town that has that type of lettering?
Um, yeah.
And illumination? If you could give us a sample, or, and I?
Chicago Steak and Fish, possibly. I don't know if you recall that sign, but the letters are offset from, well, they have an actual back panel, but the letters are offset, and the light comes out the back of the letter instead of out the front, which is more of a typical retail type of construction.
Yeah, I can't remember that. I mean, I know it, but I'm having a hard time recalling it. Okay. Can I go on with the second question? So, you know, what, when I look at your elevations, and I'm looking in A0.3, I don't know if you have this in front of you.
I don't.
It's a view of, can we get him a set of these plans?
Okay.
Okay, so it's A03? A0.3? Do you have that? Okay. So, you know, when this center was designed, we really focused a lot on pedestrian-friendly, so the buildings are, you know, moved up to the sidewalk. And I want just to give you a little context, you probably know this, but, so you know where I'm going with this. And so it really was aimed at the pedestrian and making it friendly for them. And yet, when I look at your, your photographs here, I see numbers of buildings on the gable end and logos on the gable ends of, in picture one, two, and three, and I see the, these very large numbers on the ends of these very, of these buildings. And the thing that I'm having a problem with is that I haven't seen this anywhere else in town. That's one thing. The second thing is the buildings themselves are very simple, beautiful forms, and they have detail with them. And when I look at something like that, it really, for me, takes away from the detail and the pedestrian-friendly that we were hoping for.
When you look at what specifically?
When I look at picture two and the view of the building where it says, you know, 15991, it really, and it reminds me of maybe a Lockheed building.
Right.
I mean, they, they put, you know, Building One and Building Two. And I was thinking that these numbers should be dropped to the first floor height, and if you go, what I saw around town was that all, even two-story buildings, whether they were historic or not, really have all the numbering on the first floor height.
Right.
So could you tell me what your thinking was with this?
Honestly, the architect that had designed the buildings had placed the numbers there originally, and they started the sign program, and we kind of took it over and added the tenant signage. So we didn't really take a second look at the address numbers, we just kind of went with the first design.
So what I'm seeing here is not what will be, or?
Oh, it will be.
It will be there.
Correct.
Or that's what they would like to have there.
Right. But I see your point. I mean, it could be moved away from, especially where the tenant signs are placed. It could, it would look nicer if it was probably lower on the building.
It would look, it would enhance the building and be sophisticated and, you know, be more harmonious and consistent with what is around town.
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, that's all for now, thanks.
Commissioner Kane?
I like the way the site is turning out, the buildings, the parking. I like the application, I just have one minor point. In the staff report, it refers to Pizza Studio as one of the tenants.
Right.
But in the photos that you've brought us, the signage on the side of the building is Pizza Pizza. Can, can we get rid of that?
I think that's a placeholder, actually, because the, I don't think the tenant's been announced, or they don't have a logo yet, or something of that nature. So that's actually a placeholder, that's not.
There's a provision in the commercial guidelines that says that signs shall not be silly, so I just, if they're a pizza studio, let them say Pizza Studio. Character of town, welfare and harmony.
I'm just, I'm just going to step in, and Rob will correct me if I'm wrong, we're really looking at just the concept of these. Each one of these building signs are going to come back, right, you know, right now we're just looking at. I'm just gonna step in, and Rob will correct me if I'm wrong, we're really looking at just the concept of these, each one of these building signs are gonna come back, right, you know, right now, we're just looking at, yeah, no, though, I'm sorry, they'll come back to staff. So, really, we're not necessarily looking at the exact wording and things, we're just the concept of the layout and the font, and a few things like that to make sure we're happy with it. So, they'll make sure Pizza Pizza's not on there. Just so we all understand.
Can I be assured of that, Chair Person, Burge?
I don't put my name behind it, but Rob will. I actually have a question, I think we're missing a sheet. If you take a look at A1.1, when it's talking about your corner wall signs and your ground signs, it's referencing sheet A1.0, which I don't have. And that's supposed to be the detail that gives us the specific looks of those signs. So, while it's good that we're looking at the concept of the building signs, we don't have any details on the ground signs.
Or you, did you say detail the ground signs, or the monument sign?
Well, so it's noted, "ground sign" and "corner wall sign," and both of them reference sheet A1.0, which is not in my packet.
Hmm. Let me get the next one.
Yes. That's right. So, it's probably just.
Mm-hmm. So, this should be a one right here. So, on sheet A1 dot one, detail two, which is the upper left-hand corner, it should've been detail one.
So, the details on this sheet, there's not a separate sheet with additional information, the details are on this sheet? Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions of the applicant? No? We don't have any other cards, so normally, you're given another three minutes to come up and speak. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, not really.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and with that, we're closing the public portion of the hearing. Does anyone have any questions of staff, any comments, or would like to venture a motion? Commissioner Badami?
I'll just make a comment, and it's following up on Commissioner Talisfor, with the layout and the placement of the letters so high up, to me, that doesn't appear pedestrian-friendly, so. He did agree to drop them? Okay, never mind, thank you.
It should go in a motion.
I mean, but, but that's a good point, he agreed to drop the numbers.
Right.
What the commissioner may be talking about is making sure we understand, we'd like everything dropped, as opposed to high signs and high numbers, bring them down to pedestrian level.
Okay, and I think when it's time to make a motion, those are the things that we'll ask to be placed into the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions of staff, comments, would anyone like to venture a motion, including some of the? Commissioner O'Donnell?
The question I guess I have is, the only thing I heard is discussed as far as dropping down with the numbers, I did not hear a discussion or an agreement on dropping down the signs which are not now approved. So, I don't even know where they're gonna go. So, I don't exactly, we understand that the numbers were originally submitted to us and just went through, and now they're agreeing to drop them, and I think that'll be included in our motion. But I don't know, really know where the signs are proposed to go. If we're saying, for example, if you look at picture two of A03, under 15991 is something, some sign which I can barely read, super-duper, I guess it is. And then if you go over to the two-story, rock-faced building, 681, there's another sign there, but I'm not sure that we are approving the location, maybe we are, of those, but we didn't discuss it. So, if somebody wants to discuss where they want, or how they want those signs to be limited, I'd like to hear it, because number one, while we want it to be pedestrian-friendly, if I were the tenant, I'd want people driving by to see it. And with the sign, somebody's gonna be looking for the sign. So, I think dropping it's a great idea. I'm just not sure that that same rationale just automatically fits for the name of the business, only because we didn't discuss it. So, maybe it does.
Okay. Commissioner Talisfor?
Okay, that's really a good point, I think we should hear from everybody, but truly, when looking at A0.3, the picture one, two, and three, I was thinking that it would not only be the numbers, but we would also want the logos to be appropriately placed at that first-level height, first ceiling, first-floor height, because it's pedestrian-friendly, because that's where you put it. And otherwise, if we allow logos to stay on these gable ends, it becomes sort of a confetti-type signage program, which is, it would just ruin, to me, the look of these buildings. So, I don't know where they should go, they need to be dropped. I think that it can be done successfully, with some thought put into it, unless we wanna call the applicant back up, I don't know what his staff suggests on this.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
And throw it out there to everybody, when we are talking about lowering things, do we have any opposition, or are there any guidelines opposing us placing signage on the, not the balconies, but the canopies that are hanging out?
I could answer that. No, because there's actually, in our design guidelines, photographs of just that.
So, I guess I would ask everybody, as we're talking about moving signage down from such a high elevation, if there's not an appropriate spot available adjacent to doors or windows that seems logical, would we consider that as a lowered and more subdued spot? Commissioner O'Donnell?
What I'd like to know is, if we say we don't like it so high, and that's kind of what people are saying, are we, is it satisfactory to ask the staff to drop the signs to a more reasonable location? The reason I say it sort of vaguely is, if you look at 15991, it isn't quite clear to me where you would put that, because you have that roof within a roof there, the roofline. So, the location of 15991, actually, should be fairly simple, because it's an address, and people look for addresses. But if I were the tenant, super-duper, I would want the sign visible not only to pedestrians, but to passersby. I mean, that's a wonderful location, where people are driving by, we're not gonna have nearly the volume of walkers by. So, I don't think we're saying they have to hide their signs. And I'm, I for one, if we can say we don't like them being at sort of the pinnacle of a building, and we would, I personally would, with that kind of a request of staff, would feel comfortable if staff worked that out, because if you look at the two-story, stone-faced structure, that's really difficult, because they've got it located above the lights and above the apron there. I don't know where you put it, you might put it on the face. But the only problem with awnings is they tend to get dirty, and they're old much faster than walls do. So, but, I'm not an expert, but I'm just saying, I would be satisfied if the staff, knowing that we think that they're screwing the buildings up, actually, the way they're located, if they could drop them, and, you know, if the perceived wisdom is putting on the awning is fine, I don't, I'm not against that, I'm just saying, if I were the building owner, I would not want my only sign to be on an awning.
No, understood. Is there any other comments? Commissioner Erickson?
So, this is really, probably a question for the staff. If I understood the gentleman who spoke to us this evening, when he responded to the address, or the numbers kind of thing, what he expressed his opinion to us, great, he gave us his opinion, but he also told us that it was beyond the scope of what he was hired to do, and wasn't part of what his is. So, my question for the staff is, and if I understood the gentleman who spoke to us, he said that those were designed with the architect, so does the staff know whether the numbers and those locations that were placed there by, presumably by the architect, if they were, if the location of the numbers were part of the architectural site application, and therefore have been, so that maybe beyond the scope, are not included in the sign program? I guess that's the question.
Sure, I can speak on that. Addressing actually is exempt from a sign permit, and so they were providing that information tonight, just to show the overall design. We, in some of the site and architecture, there was applications, there was locations, they showed addressing, but really, with looking at this sign program, we were looking to the sign professional, as well as the architect, to provide what they felt was really compatible with the architecture, and staff reviewing that with regards to the guidelines.
So, that was my recollection, that the addresses weren't part of the sign permit kind of thing. So, so back to the concern about the numbers, then, so the numbers are set?
The numbers are exempt from a sign permit, but if you have guidance on that, we would be open to guidance.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I don't know what that means, guidance, are you saying that you have no authority to tell people where to put their addresses?
That's what I understand from the town code, so we could check.
Really, we're suggesting to the applicant, that notwithstanding, we can't make you do it, it looks awful there, and good luck. I mean, that's all we're doing there, right? Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions of staff, conversation, anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Hanson?
Well, given what was just said, if there's no control over the numbers, then, then it kind of puts the placement of the logo signs in question as well, right? Because if you're gonna, if the numbers are gonna be up there, then how much sense would it make to move the logos down? I mean, it still makes sense to bring it all down, but I'm, it just, it's complicated, you know, it doesn't seem clear that you can get the end result that you want.
Right. Well, I think, to kind of move some of the discussion a little bit along, if we were looking at the materials and the items submitted, I think the materials were very good, I think that they match the integrity of the existing buildings. I like the idea of the backlit, I think that that's gonna look very nice, and at night, it's gonna add some very nice ambience to the space. While we maybe don't have purview over where the numbers are going to go, I see nothing wrong with making a suggestion that we feel it would benefit the overall architectural feel of the buildings, that they be lower. And I also feel that while we can't designate where every single sign is placed, because we don't even know who's going in the other spaces, that we could state that we feel that having them at such a high elevation are not aesthetically pleasing, and we would ask, with the purview of staff, that they be at a lower elevation that would be aesthetically pleasing. Does everyone?
Emotion?
I think that was a motion.
I was gonna say, I think that.
Okay, I think I just made a motion, I didn't mean to, but do we have a second?
You might, you might wanna put.
I'll second that motion.
And you might wanna put pedestrian-friendly in there.
Okay, pedestrian-friendly in there somewhere. Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, passes unanimously. Are there any appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are, anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. Forms are available in the Clerk's office, the appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Before we jump into this next item, let me ask the Commissioners, would you like to take a five-minute break? Is everyone okay? Does anyone need to? Yes? Okay, a couple people are saying yes, so I'm, we'll just do a five-minute quick break, and then return. All right, we're gonna reopen the meeting. Okay, we are now on Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four is a public hearing to consider adoption of amendments to Chapter 26, Trees and Shrubs, and Chapter 29, Zoning Regulations, Tree Protection of the Town Code, Town Code Amendment A-14-002. Are there any disclosures by Commissioner for this item? Seeing none? Mr. Cass, I understand that you're gonna be giving us a staff report this evening?
That is correct.
Great. Go right ahead.
Thank you, I'm Bob Cass, I'm a Special Projects Manager with the Parks and Public Works Department, thank you for your time and consideration of this item. Tonight, you have before you consideration of amendments to Chapter 26, Trees and Shrubs, and Chapter 29, the Tree Protection Ordinance of the Town Code. In your packet, you have a staff report that details many of the changes recommended by staff, you also have red-line versions of Chapter 26 and Chapter 29, you have some excerpts from the Parks Commission, which did review our proposed changes, you have a listing of recent tree appeals, and you also have a Resolution 2009-082, which was the adoption of the Master Tree List. I also do wanna make reference to the desk item, which Mr. Paulson commented on at the beginning of the meeting, a couple hours ago, I guess, by now, and just to remind you that we did receive two comments from the public after the packet had gone out, and you have that desk item before you. So, to jump into it, and I have a very short presentation to highlight the proposed changes and recommended changes, after which, I'm available to answer questions, and again, also here tonight to assist me, if I can't answer those questions, is our Public Works, Parks and Public Works Director, Matt Morley, Steve Regan, the Public Works Superintendent, and Rob Molden, the Town Arborist. So, without further ado, and with that little introduction, we'll move forward. So, just as a little bit of background, the current ordinance was adopted in 2003, it was the result of a real revamp of the 1984 Tree Protection Ordinance, and it was, it was a fairly substantial change in the ordinance, and that's what has been guiding us in dealing with tree removals since 19, since 2003. This past year, the Council adopted as a strategic goal in 2014, 2016, establishment of a heritage tree definition, and also, they asked that we update the 25% restriction on the amount of pruning that occurred, could occur on a tree within the context of the existing code. In addition to that, staff felt that it was important to use this opportunity to help provide some clarity to staff and the Commission regarding when we issue permits, and what the, the sort of guidance we might have, and I think that's part of, one of the driving factors, to do a little bit more broadly than just look at the heritage tree definition and the 25% pruning regulations, and that's why we, we address such things as the standards of review and the required findings, which I'll touch on. But that is a result of a number of actions, which you, a number of appeals, which have come to the Commission over the last couple of years. So, to jump right into it, proposed changes to Chapter 29, I have a copy of the PowerPoint here, so that's why I won't turn around and look, hopefully, too much, just wanna make sure I have the right slide. And I'm gonna go through these fairly quickly, and then I really will move to questions, because I'm sure you have, this is a fairly media item, so I'm sure you have a number of questions regarding some of the proposed changes. But just to really go through this in an overview fashion, we've added specific pruning standards, and specific language regarding pruning, we have revised the 25% pruning limitation to be a cumulative three-year, so whereas previously, it was, we wouldn't allow pruning of more than 25% of the tree in any one year, the concern was that somebody could come in the next year and do 25%, and the next year and do 25%, we've said, it's a rolling cumulative twenty, three-year period. We've modified the definition of diameter to be consistent with the industry standard, which is the International Society of Arboriculture, and a number of other, most other cities, it's for, it's diameter at breast height, which, for me, is here, I think for Laurel, it's about here, but for most people, it's at, oh, it's there? Okay, for me, it's here, for Laurel, it's here, it's about 54 inches or 4.5 feet. And that's the industry standard for how most arborists and most reporting does that. We've added, really, which is a pretty significant addition to the code, a definition of heritage trees, and we did a fair amount of research in coming up with this, a number of communities have a very narrow definition of heritage trees, and it's, you know, of a significant tree that's designated by a commission, or the Historic Preservation Board, and there may be three or four, like El Palo Alto, in Palo Alto, you know, one or two specific trees. Based on the kind of direction from Council, we've broadened this to be significant trees that have a major contributing fact, major contribution to the fabric of the community, and that definition is any oak, California buckeye, cedar, redwood, or Pacific madrone, and these are some significant natives that are 24 inches or greater in diameter, become a heritage tree, or any other species, 48 inches in diameter or greater. And so, that, that means that we're adding this whole category, and we'll discuss this in a little bit, of an additional review process, and additional noticing process with those more significant trees. And really, that's, I think, one of the things that the existing code has lacked, is the the public outreach and noticing aspects of potential tree removal, and specifically with the more substantial and significant trees. The heritage tree definition also requires that a pruning of a heritage tree, of a branch that's four inches in diameter or greater, would require a permit as well. And again, that's to address the issue of a, of a large, maybe backyard tree that that provides significant contribution to surrounding residents or neighbors. If you're going to take and whack a six-inch, or an eight-inch, or even a four-inch, it's a fairly rigid standard. That's going to require a permit as well. Continuing with some of the changes to Chapter 29. We have, as you can see in the report and in the red line, we've updated the tree canopy replacement standards. Part of it is just clarifying some of the numbers and ranges, which were not really that clear in the old code. But perhaps the most significant thing is that we've added two components. One is that we're encouraging replanting with native species where appropriate, and also referencing the Hillside Development Standards. And secondly, we now have a replacement option for single-family residents under 10,000 square feet to replace trees removed with a 15-gallon tree instead of the 24-inch box tree. And the reason we did that is because we really want to encourage people to replant trees on their properties. And the existing code had a fairly difficult standard for folks to do that replanting, perhaps on their own. And many people were just opting to pay the in-lug fee and not replant on their property. So we want to encourage people to plant the trees back on their property and hopefully maintain that canopy in the same location where that removal may have occurred. So that's a new provision. We also, of course, as I mentioned, have revised and clarified the standards of review and added a whole new section with required findings. So if staff is reviewing, or the Town Arborist, Rob Molden, is reviewing a permit application, he's going to be required to make a specific finding, a required finding before approving a permit. If appeal comes to the commission, there's a kind of a broad standard of review that you look at and you consider kind of holistically. And then if you are going to grant an appeal or grant a removal request, there's a specific number, you can make one or more of those specific findings. So I think it will help clarify how the code is to be used by the commission and staff in their deliberation and review of permits, applications. We've included a list of, I don't think we specifically call them nuisance trees in the ordinance, but these are trees that we are now allowing to be removed without a permit. And the list was developed in consultation both with staff, as well as our consulting arborist, Deborah Ellis, who has been before the commission on a number of occasions. And the six or seven trees are listed here: black acacia, tulip tree, tree of heaven, blue and red gum eucalyptus, which are really the most invasive and most challenging trees in our area, palms, except for Canary Island palms, and privates. So those can be removed without a permit, as long as they're under 24 inches in diameter. So a giant eucalyptus tree of, you know, four feet in diameter, five feet in diameter, would still be, well, one, if it's over four feet, it would become a heritage tree, so it would require some noticing. But those larger trees of these species still require permit for removal. That's it for Chapter 29, so I'm moving along pretty quickly here. We also have proposed changes to Chapter 26. Chapter 26 is not technically part of the zoning ordinance, so it is not directly under the purview of the Planning Commission, but it's related, and we felt it was important to bring these things forward. And part of it is that we wanted to make sure that the public trees, the trees along our public rights away, and our review and authorization to remove those trees was subject to the same standards of review and findings that the private tree removals were. We wanted to make sure that we were conforming basically to the same guidelines that the private tree removal requests were being required to follow. We've retitled the, we're recommending retitling that chapter from Trees and Shrubs to Public Trees to make sure that it's clear that it's not, you know, where are we really dealing with trees? We've added the standards of review, and we've had required findings, really to mirror Chapter 29. We've eliminated a detailed master tree list. And again, the existing code has the master street tree, and this is for street trees, it's not for private trees. We don't have a specific list of trees that people can and cannot plant on private property. We do have a list of trees that can and cannot be planted on adjacent to public right of ways. But the code provides for updating that with a resolution of the Town Council, which is attached, the most recent one that they did. And so we, really for not having to constantly go back and change the town code every time we find or decide to add a tree or remove a tree from our street tree list, we want to just allow that to be done by resolution and not require a modification of the town code. We've added a provision for a more lenient removal of liquid amber trees. These are also known as sweet gum, or as my kids like to call the two out in front of our house, sticker ball trees. And I think we're all quite familiar with those. Many communities have started programs of reforestation, recognizing that they are just not a really appropriate tree for a street tree. We've clarified within the code that we can remove street trees that are interfering with utilities, public improvements, sidewalk, curb and gutter, et cetera. We've strengthened replanting requirements. We've added that in an approved capital project, a street tree may need to be removed if we do a new traffic signal, or we do some modifications of streets. And lastly, we've eliminated a section, which in discussions with the Town Attorney and Community Development Department, Public Works, which is this large-scale planting, no one seems to have any clue why that was in the code. And if we, it seems to be an old aspect of Chapter 26, where if there was a subdivision, the developer would pay the town, and the town would plant all the trees in the subdivision. What we do, and I think the commission is well aware of it, is that we require public tree planting, street tree planting as part of the conditions of approval, and the developer is responsible for doing that. So that section really has not been used for years, and it really was not one that really has any consistency with the way we deal with street trees through the development process. Just to sum up the recommendations before the Town Council, before the Planning Commission, is that you have before you required sequoia findings, as we typically do in items like this, required findings, general plan consistency findings. And then we're asking that you forward a recommendation to the Town Council for adoption of the ordinance amendments. We are providing recommendations for suggested alternatives, and that would be that you could forward a recommendation to the Town Council for adoption with modifications or additions. Or you could continue the matter to a time certain or date certain with specific direction. That's the brief presentation. I will answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
In your work, and I want to compliment you on your presentation, it was very good, thank you. In your work, when you looked at heritage trees, I think you've indicated to us, people handle that differently in different places. Can you give me some sense of feeling what our neighbors, like Saratoga, Montessorino, Campbell, San Jose, is there any pattern that people have followed in those areas that follow our suggestion on the definition of a heritage tree?
The most, a more common use of the word heritage tree is really for a designated special tree that has significant historical or biological contribution. So in Campbell, for example, a heritage tree is the one that Teddy Roosevelt, you know, planted in front of the community center. Or there's a Linden, I know Campbell because I worked there for 23 years, so that's part of the reason I picked that as the best example. A Linden tree that was planted in the 40s by the Slavic Association or something. And so most communities use that term heritage tree to refer to a specially designated tree that goes through a process like a historical property, historic landmark. That's how Palo Alto refers to them, that's how Campbell does. Saratoga, I believe, also has a heritage tree designation, and they have the one that's kind of at the entryway to Highway 9. They have like three heritage trees. Most trees have a tree protection, most communities have a tree protection ordinance, which does have thresholds such as, you know, 12 inches. Saratoga actually has a more rigid, I think there's eight inches is the standard of which all trees are required to have a permit removal. So we kind of looked at these and kind of got a, you know, discussed with staff, what kind of felt right for the community, and what was trying to, I don't want to say guess, but gleaned from the council and sort of the community noticing process, what trees were at that level where we really wanted to have more noticing. So even though we call them heritage trees, what we really have done is we've said, okay, there's a number of types of trees and size of trees that we ought to be noticing folks about if they're proposed to be removing. And that's where we ended up. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's...
So your intention, notwithstanding what our neighbors are doing, is really just to bring in the noticing requirement? In other words, you could have done this by simply saying, "A protected tree", but instead of merely being a protected tree, it is a heritage tree. And when it becomes a heritage tree, then we have noticing requirements? Is that your...
That's correct. And again, the direction from the council was come up with a heritage tree definition. So, you know, that was latched onto as heritage tree, and we started to say, oh, what does heritage tree mean? And we saw that in some instances, there were landmark or heritage trees that were just large, and they were more protected than protected trees. The other thing we didn't want to do is we didn't want to necessarily, we didn't feel it was necessary to do noticing for every tree that's a protected tree, because that goes down to the 12-inch tree that, you know, Rob deals with on a regular basis, where there really is not the likelihood of a lot of community, as much community interest as a very large tree or a tree of a specific variety. So that's why we ended up with that.
Yes, go ahead.
A final question. The noticing requirements, if I recall correctly, are basically you're going to notice the people across the street, and I guess for immediate neighbors. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. The appeal process, on the other hand, is not limited to anybody, anybody, I guess. It certainly isn't limited to a resident of Los Gatos. It's any, I don't know what the term was, interested party or something like that. But it has no, I'm beginning to get an echo chamber here. It has no limitation on who can appeal, no showing that they are affected by the decision, just a wide-open appeal. So if somebody living in San Francisco wants to appeal something here, they can't.
That's correct.
Is that generally what is done?
And I believe, and we actually had that discussion with the Town Attorney, and that is correct, that, I mean, if it gets appealed, you know, anybody, it could be friends of the redwoods, decide they want to appeal every redwood tree that's going to be proposed for removal anywhere in Northern California. And they certainly have standing and ability to appeal that. They don't have to be a resident, and they don't have to be immediately affected. There are other reasons why they may want to appeal, and we have to accept that. At least, that's what that Town Attorney told.
We'll talk to him later. Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor, thank you. And thank you very much. Your presentation just synthesized everything down to these few pages.
Oh, thank you, very much.
Getting back to the heritage tree and then the protected tree, so is there a difference?
Yes. So the existing ordinance, Chapter 29, the Tree Protection Ordinance, establishes a category of trees that are protected trees. That's existed since, well, maybe '84, but certainly since 2003. And the protected trees are any tree 12 inches in diameter or greater on developed, single-family residential property. Any of four categories of slow-growing trees on residential property of eight inches in diameter or greater, and I think it's a couple oaks and a couple others. Any tree four inches or more in diameter on commercial or undeveloped property or public property. So those are all currently protected trees. But again, under the existing code, and there's permit, you have to get a permit to remove any of those trees, whether it's in conjunction with a development application, or it's a resident or an office building that wants to remove a tree. You still have to apply for a permit. We have never had any kind of public noticing aspect to a proposed removal. And so what we said, and what we looked at, is we said, you know, the issues that the commission has had to deal with oftentimes result in neighbors or affected people not being aware that a very large tree might be removed. And that, you know, we don't think that, we thought we could make that adjustment by creating this new category of heritage tree, which were larger, more significant trees, and having that category be ones that went through a more rigid process for noticing. Does that answer your question?
Well, actually, I thought, you know, you have your heritage trees, and then you give examples of the California buckeye, the cedar, and the oak. And I thought in Los Gatos, the oak tree was, you know, the pivot, you know, it's the number-one protected tree.
So understand that any oak right now, any oak, well, any oak of 12 inches or greater is protected on residential. If it's two certain types of oak, it's eight inches or greater, it's protected, meaning you have to have a permit to remove it. It's just that, once it gets to 24 inches under this proposed revision, then if you want to remove it, we're going to notify the folks around you.
I see.
And currently, we don't, we're not, we don't do any noticing for tree removals. Current code doesn't require any noticing for tree removals. Unless there's an, you know, an appeal that might occur, which, you know, is, how does someone find out about that? That's, you know, it could be, it's usually the applicant. It's not usually an adjacent property owner.
Right. I guess, you know, I look at this list, and I can agree with most of it. The one that pops out to me, though, is the redwood tree, because sometimes that's the one that comes before us a lot, because it causes the damage of the sidewalks and driveways and whatever else, and there are other trees, too. But this one in particular, only because, you know, a redwood tree is a forest tree. And I know a lot of times people use it as a screening method, and the end result is that it screens for a while, but then the tree grows to be 60 feet tall, and you have a big trunk. And the branches are, you know, do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, no. In fact, you'll probably be hearing another appeal of a redwood tree shortly.
So I'm curious why it was clarified as a heritage or protected.
Okay, a redwood tree currently is protected on residential property if it's over 12 inches. It's protected on commercial property if it's over four inches. So anybody that wants to remove a redwood tree under the existing ordinance has to get a permit. Now, if I had a 100-foot-tall redwood tree that was 12 inches, 12 feet in diameter on my property today, that was affecting my structure, I could apply for a permit, and we could grant it, and it could be removed. What we're saying with including it is, because redwoods are, yes, they're forest trees, but we're kind of up against the Santa Cruz Mountains, they're iconic, they're really identified with, you know, Los Gatos High School, and in the downtown, and people do plant them in the wrong places. We just want to add that component of public noticing to the removal of some of these large stately redwoods, along with some of the other trees. And cedars are in the same category.
Commissioner Kane?
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Cass. It's excellent and educational. Took a while to read it, but I learned a great deal.
Thank you.
With respect to preserving and protecting, I can understand oak, cedar, redwood. I don't know why you'd want to protect a buckeye. I'd just box him up, send him back to Columbus. Can we discuss modifications of this list?
I heard some gasps behind me. I didn't turn around. But the reason that the buckeye, okay, so buckeye currently is on a protected, is any buckeye, like any other tree in town, is protected if it's 12 inches on residential or four inches on, I think it's not the, is it a slow-growing one? It's not on the slow-growing list, is it? It is. So it's eight inches. It's eight inches at residential, because it's a slow-growing. But a buckeye is, at least in my discussions with staff and also our consulting arborist, is considered a significant native tree that has some significant contribution to the habitat, and that's why it's on the list.
That's a terrible thing. Do we have any wolverine trees?
Do we have any what?
Wolverine trees.
Wolverine trees?
Mr. Kane?
I'm not familiar with what a wolverine tree is.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a series of questions to help. So in the definition, the proposed definition of heritage trees, are all the species that are designated, all native trees, to this location?
Well, redwood is... Well, redwood is, redwood is not a flatland native, but it's a, a native of our area. Cedar is not really a native tree. I'm looking at Rob. Cedar's on that list. Yes, over 20, over 24 inches. So cedar, I don't believe is a native. I mean, cedars, I think, are from Lebanon or the Himalayas. Okay. Yeah. So cedars are not a, a native, but they're, they've been planted. They're large. They're significant trees. So we, we added that. And there have been a couple of significant cedars that have come before the commission. Oaks clearly are natives. And then we have the buckeye and the madrone, which are, which are natives.
Okay. So I'm trying to figure out which direction to go, because I went, I'm eventually going to go two directions with the questions about heritage trees. But let me stay with this train of thought. So, so one of the things that we do, one of the, that we do as people, is we intrude on the natural ecological system which was created. And some people do that unintentionally in their homes. So they plant trees which would never have grown in a particular area. That has a whole series, and they, and if let, left alone for a long, enough period of time, many of those trees would grow large enough to become protected. Okay? So, but we're then imposing something on the environment, and then we're protecting what we've imposed on the environment. So you, I understand what you, I understand, I think I understand. I've been on this commission long enough to know, to have a sensitivity to why you probably came up with this definition. My sense is, this is a political definition more than it's something that would reflect a responsible way to respond, to respond to what should be planted and what should be protected if I look at it from an, from an ecological or environmental standpoint. Now, did you, so that's one kind of comment about the definition of heritage trees. So related to that, so a question is, when you had the opportunity to look at these two ordinances, did you give any consideration to having a, having a clear definition of native trees and to granting specific protection to native trees and creating incentives and rewards for both the developers who are developing commercial properties and, and individuals who are, quote, "developing residential properties" to, to plant trees which are more compatible from, so therefore native, trees that are more compatible to the natural environment, as opposed to us codifying things that are intrusive to the environment?
I guess I have kind of two responses to that, and then I'll see if Joel wants to add anything. Certainly, I, I think it's important to remember that this ordinance is really geared towards protecting the existing urban forest. It, it's not an ordinance, and it's not part of what we were trying to look at, to deal with how we regulate, incentivize, or determine what kinds of trees get planted in new development or existing development. So I think it's important to separate those two and understand that what we're responding to from the council's direction and from generally what the feedback we've gotten with the result of items that have come to the commission is, how do we deal with our existing urban forest, whether we like the trees that are planted there or not, whether we like eucalyptus trees or not? I mean, their, eucalyptus tree is probably the best example, Commissioner Erickson, of what you're talking about, is that they are not a native species. They have very significant and sometimes negative impact on natives and, you know, they're, they're identified as fire hazard, but they are iconic with certain parts of the Bay Area. And there are some spectacular eucalyptus trees. Yes, they're nasty and messy, and they don't allow undergrowth, but to, to begin a process to say that, and, and a number of communities have gone through very, very difficult processes to look at, you know, removing large stands of eucalyptus trees. So I think that's the best example of what you're saying, is that there are trees in our environment that are planted and are not appropriate to the environment. As far as the incentivizing, we do have the hillside development standards, which do encourage native planting. And the hillsides are really the areas where that, which is exactly what you're talking about, much more than the flatlands. I believe we have water-efficient landscape standards, which were required to be adopted by all communities, which really try and get folks to plant more water, drought-tolerant and water-efficient landscaping and materials. But beyond the fact and the acknowledgement that we have some of that existing stuff in those areas, no, we did not really look at in, in this review, trying to regulate the types of trees that are planted. And, and Joel, I don't know if you have, or Laurel, if you have anything you want to add to that?
I'll start, and Joel will probably finish. I was just looking at our general plan, and the general plan has a lot of goals around the natural environment here in town. And there is one goal in particular that already addresses the preservation and protection of native plants and plant communities in the town, and to promote the appropriate use of local native plants and habitat restoration and landscaping. So that's our overarching, one of many overarching goals. And then go through a variety of policies that help us guide development and other changes, including use of, of native plants on town properties, et cetera. But we also have recognition of protecting soil resources and water resources. And as we know, our trees are really part of that larger ecosystem. So what this ordinance was really trying to do was to dive down a little bit deeper in terms of the details. How do we actually implement something that can make, that, that's workable, both for the commission, since you see so many appeals, as well as for staff? It's certainly possible that the commission could recommend that the definition of heritage tree include oak, buckeye, madrone, you know, and whether you have comments on redwood and cedars. That could be a comment that you have. But there are, because of the location of the town, we have so many different ecosystems. We have oak woodland habitats. We've got riparian. Some of our properties are starting to get into forest land. So, you know, if you do have comments, those, these are the kinds of comments that the council would be interested in.
I guess I would just follow up, Chair, so I'm going to talk two ways. So one of the required findings is, and so I was, I'm very familiar with the portion of the general plan that Ms. Pravetti just cited. That's part of the origin for me asking the question because there will need to be a required finding that is consistent with the general plan. So part of why I was probing is, it's not clear to me, given my sense of the general plan, with trees that are non-native, not being, you know, being given, given certain particular protected status, is that really consistent with the, with the intent of the general plan? That's, I don't know. I'm not expressing an opinion, but it's just a question. That was, that was part of the question. And then back to you. I understand about trying to protect the, the, the current forest, town forest. I guess I worry about the fact that we can be too short-sighted, because we, my sense is that policies and ordinances should look at the long term. And they should also help us respond sometimes to if we've made mistakes of the past, enable us to correct those mistakes and more align things, and not protect mistakes that have been made in the past. So the fact that one may have planted non-native trees, if you were pursuing that logic, in the area, and they became big, doesn't mean that for the next 200 years, we should continue to perpetuate that mistake, or for the next 100 years for some of those trees, you know, trees all have life sizes we have. So I guess my, my, while I, while I understand what you said, it seems like to me I would want us not to be too short-sighted and to look at the long term and not just to say, oh, we need to protect, we're at some magic moment in 2015, and this is the desirable kind of forestation in this town. At this moment, we're going to protect it because it's, we're, we're writing this ordinance in 2015. If we had written this ordinance in 1892, we might have protected different trees.
Just have a, if I may, Chair, respond a couple of things. First, the current ordinance protects all trees, you know, on residential 12 inches or greater. Doesn't matter what they are. Doesn't matter when they were planted, and four inches or greater. So nothing we're doing here is really protecting more trees. It's really just layering on a noticing process for some significant trees, whether we like them, or you like them, or I like them. It's layering on this public noticing process, which we, we think is a good thing in response to kind of what some of the issues that we see. Secondly, nothing in here prohibits us from granting a removal permit of a eucalyptus, or a cedar, or a redwood, or, or some other invasive tree, if it meets any of the required findings. And one of those findings may be that it has an impact on more desirable native species, or it's, it's affecting the economic utility of the property disparate than what the neighbors are. I mean, a good example, and this is, if I can, is, let's say you want to re-landscape your backyard, and you want to put a swimming pool in there, or you want to put some raised, raised vegetable beds. Under the current code, we really don't have the authority to approve a removal of a, of a large tree in somebody's backyard that may want to lands, re-landscape and put in a pool, or put in some raised vegetable beds. Under the new one, you, you at least have this ability to find that we're encumbering that property differentially from a economic, you know, that, hey, if my neighbor can put in a swimming pool, I happen to have this redwood tree. Now, it's not just, oh, well, you, anyone that wants to put in a, a pool could put in a pool, because the other issues that you look at are the type of tree, the size of the tree, the species, the character, et cetera. But at least allows a finding that would allow you to do that. So we think we've come up with a good balance. I do understand your, your, your comments, and I think they're good ones. I think that may be another issue that's sort of, sort of like the next phase of looking at how we manage our urban forest, and what's the way to move it forward in a, in a more harmonious and environmental manner.
Let me ask you one follow-up question, and then I've got a different topic to ask a question about. So let me ask you, so if I'm, so let's say that I have, you picked the non-native species, that I have a big tree in my backyard, hypothetically, a madrone, let's say, for example.
That's a native, but that's...
But, well...
You wanted a non-native.
Eucalyptus.
Okay, eucalyptus.
Eucalyptus, yeah. Okay, eucalyptus. I've got a big eucalyptus tree in my backyard, and it's protected because it's grown to a certain size. Let's say I want to be a responsible homeowner, and it's far enough away from my house, it's not causing any damage, and I want to take that tree out, and I want to replace it with two oak trees. Does this create the, because I want to be responsible. I want to put, I want to replace an undesirable, non-native tree with two, three, I don't know. You tell me how many I'd need to. So I will be responsible and be consistent, and so that long after I'm not here, those trees will be complementary to the environment, not intrusive on them. My guess, my sense is, from talking with people in town, it would be pretty impossible to, for that to happen now. And I don't know that this language allows that to happen. Maybe that's not the intent of this.
That's, I'm just scanning the, the required findings. I think that's a really good point because, and I'll defer to Rob. I mean, there's some findings that you could maybe make that would allow you to do that. But interestingly, in Chapter 26, we have a specific finding that says that the removal of a tree to be replaced with a more suitable street tree, canopy tree, is one of the findings we can make. And the example there is, let's say you have a street that has a bunch of large sycamores or nice Chinese pistachio canopy trees, and somebody has a healthy crepe myrtle in their park strip. The current code doesn't allow us to remove a healthy tree, even though it doesn't contribute to the canopy of the, of the, the street trees. Under the finding that we added in 26, we said you could do that. So, so your point might be that there may be a, a desire to add an additional finding that would allow for a removal and of a non-native and replacement with natives, if it would contribute, you know, or some kind of thing like that. And I think that's a very legitimate comment to make, that we don't have that currently explicit in the required findings. Does it answer your question?
That seems a reasonable response. You, I think you understand what I was trying to get at.
Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully, I, I, yeah. And I, I, I do understand that, so.
So I think that we should pause and, and allow for the public speaking. We have a couple cards, and then we can come back and complete our dialogue. Is that all right?
That's great with me. I could think...
We have lots of conversation still, so...
I could use a drink of water.
Okay, great. All right. So we are going to open up the public portion of the hearing. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please make sure you state your name and your address for the record. David Weissman. Mr. Weissman, make sure that microphone is pulled right up in front of you so that we can hear you.
Dave Weissman, Francis Oaks. Staff has submitted a proposed draft to improve the Tree Protection Ordinance. I think this process so far is just about perfect, since staff's proposals deal almost exclusively with those trees, not in the hillsides. There are issues that staff have the most, these are the issues that staff has the most experience and exposure to. Now I suggest that those parts of Chapter 29 that deal with the hillsides be turned over to a small committee where, of Los Gatos citizens that have biological expertise that may not be present on staff, and we, and where they can have an effective input. This committee could be chaired by Bob Cass and would go specifically to some of the questions that Commissioner Erickson has brought up. And you can see the, the dichotomy here between talking about trees in the flatland and talking about trees in the hillsides. They, they need to be dealt with separately. The environments are just too different. And the California buckeye, Mike, is a native hillside tree. It's different than the, no, no, I'm saying, no, no, I don't, no, no. Okay, anyway, would such a process...
I will learn to love it.
Would such a process be precedent-setting? Absolutely not. In 2003, when the current Chapter 29 was last revised, both after Planning Commission and Town Council hearings, several Los Gatos residents got extensively involved in a public workshop type setup, and we produced the present document that was then approved by the Town Council. On the desk item that I sent you today, I suggest two possible ways to improve this draft. Two A specifically talks about dividing the Tree Protection Ordinance into the two distinctions. Both are based on my observations as to how to make this ordinance more effective. I am sure that there are other ways, including some of the proposals from Ms. Quintana's desk item that you also have, that can improve it. And I recommend that this document now be sent to some appropriate group or committee chaired by Bob Cass before going to the Town Council. There's just no way to, to, to workshop these documents in this kind of a format. It only makes sense to give the Town Council a document that's ready for prime time.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? No. Thank you very much.
My name is Mary Keith Osborne. I live a while on, on...
I live on 17051 Wildway in Oak Woodlands. It was a very early 1909 subdivision. We have lots and lots of oaks. People take out the oaks, and they're not replaced with oaks, and they should be, because we're losing our Oak Woodlands. I've just come from an oak conference in Visalia, where they love their trees, and they have valley oaks all aligned on the way to the end. It's too bad we don't have some native oaks on our, or more native oaks on our access roads to Los Gatos. We also have toayans, and toayans are important, too, and they're a shrub. You haven't mentioned shrubs. And they, they're very necessary, the birds eat them. We have, and I live in, it's Oak Woodlands, I've been there for 75 years, I know all the plants. I belong to California Plant Society and the Oak Woodlands, so I'm, most of what she said is just great. I'm really, it's just, my neighbor removed a blue oak, probably 12 inches in diameter, and he replaced it with a, what do they call them? Anyway, he didn't place it with a native tree, and I felt that's really sad. And I don't think he got permits to do it either. He got, he got a tree around, his neighbor put rocks around an old valley oak and filled it in with dirt right next to the, I went to Rob Mulder, I think, no, I didn't go to Rob Mulder, but I said, "Hey, this is, this is really bad for the tree, because you're putting water down there, and you're going to ruin the roots, and you can't, there's no air exchange," and he didn't listen. So, I've lost lots of trees. We had Bacardo, we had six acres of Oak Woodlands, we had quail, and about 35 years ago, the town gave permission to my neighbor to erase that and put in Visona Business Park. We have no more quail, we have a lot of trees that are gone. It's just a shame. So, I just, I just hope that when a tree is removed, that the oak tree is removed that is replaced with another tree. And I didn't have much chance to, I just got, I just got home and I had a message on machine from someone in the city and said, "We're having an oak, the oak conference." Do I? Well, it's okay, I'll just give up. I mean, I'm, I mean, I have a lot more to say, and there's lots of...
You have 30 more seconds, ma'am. That's not your red light, that's your yellow light.
I don't know. I've spoken before, but I just came unprepared. I have a lot more. I've had, there's diseases in our oaks that are really bad, and I'll talk to Rob Mulder about it. There.
Actually, though, I have a question for you, so if you wouldn't mind staying. So in hearing what you had to say and looking at the wording on this, would it be your recommendation in the portion of these documents that discuss replanting, that there be wording in here very specific to our oaks, that if an oak is removed from a property, that it must be replaced with a like-kind tree?
Yes, because we're losing our Oak Woodlands, and they're in private property, they're on private property mostly, unlike the redwoods. And there's so many tremendous amounts of animal life within the oak forests, yes, they really should be replaced with another oak.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions for the speaker? Mr. Kane?
No, that was it. You asked, you asked my question.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other speakers, so at that, we're going to close the public portion of the hearing, and now return to discussion. Does anyone have any questions of staff, comment, want to make a motion? Oh, wow. Okay. Commissioner, tell us four.
Thank you. So, of staff, Mr. Weisman made a suggestion about something that had happened previously, a committee that was formed that did a more, that contributed to this. Anyway, so my question would be to follow, what, what do you think? Is that something that we should consider or not, or?
I'll make a comment and then again, let the community development folks talk. I think that the commission could certainly include that as your, as your comments and recommendations to the, to the council, if, in moving this forward. And the reason I, I say that is because I do feel it's important to move this forward, given what we've seen and we're trying to grapple with and get some clarity and, and get some better guidance on how we deal with, with tree removals. What we've come up with certainly isn't perfect. I mean, anything can be improved over time, but, but it gets subject to elegance creep, where, you know, when do you stop refining the document? I mean, we've heard some good comments from the commission already. Forwarding those forward, if you feel strongly about wanting to pull off the hillsides and, and suggest that the council move forward with a more focused hillside reforestation, native tree process, I think that would be a very appropriate comment to include in forwarding that to the council. And then, if the council so desires to establish a subcommittee or work with the general plan committee or, or any sort of process, I mean, I think that gives them the attention to do that.
Now, I think the reason that might be merited is because there is a lot more development happening in our hillsides. So, that's, would be my comment. But anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I had a specific comment and then a couple of general comments. Actually, my question was on the second part of the first level changes. One was the heritage tree, this is direction from council, and the other thing was the 25% pruning. And I, I just couldn't get past that, because I was trying to envision how this thing would work and how you would measure it. It's very clear how to measure the diameter of a tree. And if you, if you get your tree trimmed and it's today, and you have the trees trimmed tomorrow, and the next day, it's pretty easy to measure how you go from 1 to 25%. But, a year from now, the tree grows back some, you trim some more, how, I mean, how on earth would anyone be able to measure that and to know that they were in complaint?
And it's, it is challenging. And in fact, if you look at the standards for pruning and maintenance by ISA, the International Society of Arbiculture, the 25% itself is somewhat, I mean, what does 25% mean? Is it 25% of the canopy? Is it 25% of the, the main structural limbs? And, you know, how do you judge it? It, it isn't a science. But by putting that in there, it's really a statement that the town is not going to accept somebody who comes in and does clearly 25%, and then the next year does 25%, and then the next year does 25%. We had no restriction against that. And, you know, 28, 30, you know, what's appropriate. We also have statements in here that any pruning has to be for a specific objective, you know, and there are very specific reasons for pruning, for structure, for aesthetics, for health, for maintenance. And so pruning can't just be done to just reduce a tree to something that's not a tree. So, I think we have it covered. I mean, I think you're right. It's, it's, it's a little bit subjective, it's a little bit difficult to measure, but I do think we have it covered by adding this additional language.
Okay. So I, I get that, and I figured that even the original 25% was difficult, that I, you know, I just wanted to say that. So then, then I want to get back to kind of a general comment, and I think it's somewhat in line with some of the other comments that was made, is, as I was kind of going through this, I, and I thought about the general plan, I, I thought, this is good to tell you what not to do, but it doesn't tell you what to do. And I, I personally would like to see some kind of document, maybe it's a separate one, that's sort of like a form-based code that says, "This is how Los Gatos would like to see trees be." You know, not how not to do them, but you have to have that, too. But I, I was thinking kind of more about, it would be nice to have something like that, like, here's what we want, and how to get there. And, and I was looking also at the Parks Commission comments and, you know, an education program for the residents. I, I, this is, you know, difficult for us that have a lot of experience, and how does the average resident, you know, even know where to go? I mean, I think you can measure the dynamics of trees and stuff, but, so, so that, I don't know that that changes the approval of this document, but it definitely was on my mind. My third comment, and I don't know that that's in the purview of tonight's discussion, but I wanted to bring up, given the comments in the staff report about the large number of, of tree removal appeals that have come to the Planning Commission, I've only been party to one since I've been on this commission, but I wondered if there wasn't another review of this document or the process for people applying for tree removals to make sure that it's getting the desired result. And I saw that there's some clarifying language, but I wondered if there aren't some issues with the general process and how it flows and works that's leading to it, the large number of appeals, and I wondered if that should be looked at.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have just two comments. I guess it would be, number one, I don't particularly agree with the definition of the heritage tree. I, no difficulty protecting trees. But to define a heritage tree as simply on the diameter, to me, it plays games with the language. There's nothing heritage about certain trees that are of a certain dimension. They don't become heritage, because they, they grew up. So I could not support the definition of heritage tree as presently done. But more importantly, and what would be more boringly, I unfortunately have gone over the chapters drafted, the red lines, the whole thing, with some care, and I have a number of comments, which I talked to the town attorney about, not specifically, but I'm perfectly comfortable to give to him my marked-up copy. There are lots of things, this was not drafted by a lawyer, with all due respect, and I suppose that's advantage, but occasionally lawyers do bring something to the party, and some of the language here would not withstand legal scrutiny, and that means if you get sued on it, it'll be a field day. So, I personally don't think that this draft has gotten enough review and comment. At best, I will simply turn over my pages of comments, and they're not, you know, lawyers have a bad habit of picking some arguments that are really not important. I've tried not to do that. I've tried to be helpful in this, and somebody else can judge how helpful it is. But I do know this, if we can't discuss these things, and I don't think at the moment's a good time to do it, 10 minutes to 10, I don't know how we can tonight say, "Oh, it's fine. We recommend you, you adopt it, and maybe we have one question, that's heritage tree, or maybe we have another, the list we don't like with something on the list." I think that gives short shrift to this whole process. And, so, whether it's us, or whether as suggested, that it is a committee formed with people that have certainly greater expertise than I have, to me, there's only two possibilities. We either spend more time and we actually discuss this section by section, and we perhaps set a special meeting for that, or we allow the town attorney, for example, to have more time. You know, I perhaps am imagining this, but I would imagine that the job, the town attorney is overwhelming, and therefore it's very difficult for him to critique this. I think it's a wonderful job. I'm not attacking your job. The language, however, leaves something to be desired. And no wonder, it's, it's a lot of language. So, I'm not prepared this evening to recommend the approval of this for the two reasons I've just stated.
Let me ask a question. Originally going into this, my thought had been we would go section by section, however, there's just been so much basic dialogue and understanding how the document itself originated and changed. We haven't even been able to get into that, and I know there's quite a few people that have comments. Would this be, and I guess I would ask you guys, maybe we do set a special meeting to go, you know, section by section, because otherwise, what do we do? Do we all submit our comments for you guys to review? You know, I think that there's a lot of things to go through, and I would just like to know from my fellow commissioners, if that's an agreeable path, or if you have a different idea. But it certainly sounds like none of us are ready to move it on. I think there's enough questions that we all would like a little bit more tweaking. Commissioner Erickson, what are your thoughts?
So, it, so I had concerns before, so my friend and colleague, Mr. O'Donnell, caused those to be heightened a bit. So, if we were going to, I would just suggest to Chair, if we were going to take the path that you were suggesting, it would make sense to me to allow members of the commission to give the staff their comments, have the benefit of potentially, I mean, they may look at what Commissioner O'Donnell, I mean, Mr. Schultz may look at what Commissioner O'Donnell says, and, you know, I understand now why he's a retired attorney, not a current practicing attorney. You know, I don't know what he'll say, you know? You know, but, but assuming that there's one gem of wisdom in there that might be incorporated, then we would have the benefit, and they would be obviously free to not incorporate whatever. But it wouldn't seem to me that it would be particularly useful to call a meeting, first to give the comments to, and then to have a second special meeting to, after the staff's had a chance to, you know, wade through those.
I completely agree with you. Was that an acceptable way, you would think, if we were to?
Yes. I mean, that was exactly was my point. If, if you've done a lot of work and you've got comments and you've got your marked-up sheets, please give those to staff. And then we certainly can do a workshop, more informal, and go page by page, since it's, it's difficult to do this type of task at 10 o'clock at night, and probably every one of your meetings, it's going to be at 10 o'clock at night, so it might be one that you do a workshop and, and get to a point when you can make a recommendation to council. Unfortunately, the Planning Commission doesn't have the ability to, to appoint a subcommittee of PC and, and members of the public, and only council can do that. But maybe after a workshop, that could still be a work, a recommendation. But I am with Bob, saying that, you know, this is a high priority to get to council, though, because of the, the issues that have come up recently with tree removal appeals. So we do want to get through it. So if we're going to do a workshop, I'd like it to be fairly soon, so that we can move on and get it up to council in an appropriate time.
The other comment I would just add is that I would recommend that we do a workshop in between our regularly scheduled meetings, so that way, when we are ready to continue, we can continue this to a date certain, so that way the public hearing remains open.
I have... Of course.
I have marked up my copy, as I've indicated, not with the intention just to hand it to somebody, because it's my scribbling. I don't know if this is online. If it's not, it is online, because I need a clean copy, and I would be willing to try to make it more, get rid of some of my comments and make the ones, other ones more legible. And then, if we could agree, when those of us who have written comments would submit them, I would be happy to do that. And I think there were others who will, who will have specific comments. We could all do that, we could all agree to a time, a date to do it, and maybe set this special meeting. At least then, the whole staff would know what we're talking about, and you might respond by saying, "I think a couple of these things are well worth pursuing, and here's my answer to the other ones." And it would be a better use of everybody's time, because you know what we're talking about.
And I think the other benefit is, then we can include that with the staff report, so all the commissioners have the same information as to what other commissioners' comments were, and then that may trigger other comments and/or questions.
Okay.
So that being said, would it be beneficial to say we could have comments on this to staff by, what, Tuesday? I know Monday's a holiday, some people will be out of town. Is Tuesday an acceptable amount of time for people to mark up a clean, okay? So if we had it to the staff by, I'm going to say, end of day Tuesday, okay?
Okay, 5 o'clock Tuesday.
5 o'clock Tuesday, close of business. When would be an adequate amount of time to process all that information and meet again?
So, we were just having that same consultation, and we were thinking maybe March 4th for the special meeting, just to give, I think, and also it affords the public opportunity to also continue to submit comments to us, so we can see how we can reconcile all the comments. So March 4th for the special meeting, and then, would, a week, would we be ready by March 11th? We'd probably need more time. So the 25th would likely be then the, the date when we would continue this public hearing.
Do those dates sound acceptable to everybody?
Yeah. So, we need to make a motion on that, or we just continue?
So we need to make a motion on that, or we just continue? We need a motion.
So does anyone want it? Mr. O'Donnell, thank you.
I'll try the motion. I, I move that, we continue this matter until March 25th with the, no, it's March 25th, with the intention that prior to that date on the 25th, and in particular on March 4th, any commissioner who has written comments to make or markups of the proposed ordinances would submit them by this coming Tuesday, which is what date? The 17th, by close of business on that date, to allow the staff enough time to consider any and all written comments, and hopefully to respond, and I'm sure they will respond, prior to the date of the 25th.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Bondami?
I'll second the motion.
All right, do we have any comment or additional? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So a report from the Director of Community Development.
Thank you. Last week, our Town Council met, and amongst the several items that they considered, they started their serious deliberations on the North Forty specific plan. So they discussed numbers of housing units and the amount of square footage for commercial. They did not make any motions, so they were really more talking and trying to understand where there was consensus amongst the group, and they've continued their deliberations to March 3rd. So that is an ongoing conversation, and we encourage, the public hearing has been closed, but of course, many members of our community would be interested in observing those deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any commissioners that have an issue they would like to bring? Commissioner Kane?
Just a reminder that members of the Town Council and members of the Planning Commission have been invited to an educational summit tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Los Gatos Lodge. If anybody didn't get that memo, staff could probably provide, provide it to you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, do you mind taking the conversation out while we complete our meeting? Thank you. Commissioner Talisfor?
I, I just wanted to know, did we address item number two?
Item number two is our continued item.
So we did do that, okay. So I was sleeping.
All right, do we have any other items to discuss? No? Okay, meeting adjourned.